Good evening, everybody. We're going to get started here in just a couple of minutes. We'll double check on our attendance. Can you do, can you let me know if we have enough people here? I think we need five for a quorum.
I think everybody is here.
Is that everybody here? Okay. Well, I think we're going to get started here since we've got our quorum. And I believe our applicant or requester for this evening is on. Is that Ms. Nunnamaker? Can I see?
Ms. Sue White. They're both there. Sue White there and there's the daughter there. The daughter's a little bit better looking because of the husband. Okay, there, there's the daughter.
All right. Thank you both for being here. Was Ms. Fernandez Madrid planning on joining us? Or did she have a requested or indicated absence?
I am unaware of that. Just because any email could have been sent today.
Let's give her the old three-minute deference. We'll just let everybody say hi to each other. It's good to see the collected magic of Carlton. We're going to have a relatively quick night tonight, so.
Never say that.
I say that.
That's a curse.
Yeah. Yeah. Unless you guys want to discuss substantive tax policy or something that put me to sleep. I don't know if I'll make it past 7:30. We do have.
Last times I made, somebody made a comment like that, it lasted two meetings.
Yeah, two days.
No, two complete meetings.
Well, I formally retract and beg pardon.
We could go with a roll call.
Yeah, who would like to commence? We'll start the meeting with a roll call.
All right. So.
Page three.
All right. So Planning Commission Chair Anthony Stewart.
Present.
All right. Commission Vice Chair Bob Graham.
Present.
Commissioner Jim Mandy.
Present.
Commissioner Randy Robbins. I see you on. Commissioner Jennifer Nordstrom.
Present.
Commissioner Susan Terrell.
I'm here.
Commissioner Annette Madrid Fernandez. Or is it Fernandez Madrid?
It appear that either Ms. Fernandez Madrid or Madrid Fernandez is here tonight.
Fernandez Madrid. All right.
With that, it looks like we've got a quorum. We'll get started. First thing we want to do is approve the minutes from the meeting from October 18th, 2021. Everybody have a chance to review that? Or are there anything that, was there anything that you thought wasn't appropriately reflected in the minutes? We can make additions or modifications. If there aren't any, we can just have somebody move to approve. Give a second and we'll give it a quick vote.
I move to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Second.
All right, we'll do a quick voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any not approving of passing these minutes, say nay right now, please. That's a voice vote unanimously. Our next point will be addressing citizen comments. There's nobody here at City Hall and there are a couple of individuals. But I think, other than Ms. Frugey, everybody else here has, has different matter before the board. Ms. Frugey, did you have a comment this evening or were you just joining us?
Just joining.
Understood. Excellent. Well, your grass does look very green. It's nice to see that this time of year. First on our discussion topics this evening will be the code interpretation request. That will be presented by Mr. Kyle Jenkins.
Thank you, sir. I think we need to start with the type two statement.
I'm going to do that and then Mr. Jenkins is going to get us going. We're opening formally the public hearing right now. The purpose of the hearing and testimony this evening is a code interpretation request. CI 2021-01134 South Park Street. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties. The application must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. City zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings affect or in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of factor to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council land use board or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the council for an opportunity to be present, excuse me, to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant requests by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. The order of proceedings are generally as follows. Required statements to staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, neutral testimony rebuttal by the applicant, requests for continuous to leave the record open, close the hearing, close the record deliberations and decision. I would like for any counselors to indicate any conflicts of interest, ex parte contact bias, or any other reason why we can't perform to our expectations today.
Um, I, I have to recuse myself. I'm, our kids went to school with the whites and we're good friends with them. So I have to abstain from this evening.
Okay, as a reminder, when we, so long as we do not think it can impair our impartial decision-making, we can make decisions, especially in a small community like this. Anybody else have any conflicts of interest or reason they don't wish to participate in this tonight? Seeing no others, we'll just do a call for any objections to our having jurisdiction for this code interpretation request this evening. Anybody believe that we do not have the power to do what we're going to do tonight? Hearing then, we will now commence the staff report with Mr. Jenkins.
All right, thank you, Chair. So as mentioned, tonight, we will be going over a planning commission code interpretation request. I'm not sure how familiar most of you are with these. They're pretty infrequent, but I will explain kind of the process and then what we're looking at and the findings that, that you all will have to make tonight during, during the staff report. This is a code interpretate, interpret, interpretation request, excuse me. File number CI 2021-01. Applicant is Ms. Nunnamaker on behalf of Ms. White. The request is a interpretation or that the planning commission make an interpretation that a short-term rental is a permitted use in the downtown district zone. Site location, it's 134 Park Street. Tax map number R3421DA lot 900. I left about 5,000 square feet designated as commercial on the comprehensive plan map and zoned downtown district, Main Street sub-district. The applicable criteria we'll be looking at tonight are found in section 17.160 with additional, additional attention to the standards for BRDs and 17.125 and the standards for development in the downtown district and 17.30. Exhibits to your staff report, they just obscenity map, absolutely showing where the property is. And exhibit B is the submitted narrative by Ms. Nunnamaker. So as mentioned, the applicant is requesting that the planning commission interpret the Carlton Development Code, section 17.30, to include short-term vacation rentals as a similar use permitted in the downtown district. Code interpretations are processed as type two actions and are considered in accordance with type two actions and procedures outlined in 17.188. The procedure for determining a similar use via code interpretation is stated in 17.160.050 is listed under subsection two under the procedure section in your staff report. I'm just going to cover this in a little more detail than I normally would because I know these are not particularly common applications. So essentially what we're looking at tonight is when I go into a, when I'm looking at the code, every zoning district has a list of permitted uses, conditionally permitted uses and prohibited uses. So when a property owner or another applicant comes to me and says, hey, is this, is this a permitted use or an allowed use in the zone? Will I be able to develop it? I look into the code and the code usually tells me yes, no, or it's a conditional use. In this case, the code does not specify whether a vacation rental is a permitted or conditionally permitted use in the downtown district. So the, the task you all have on your hands tonight is, is discussing and making findings that state either, yes, this is a similar use to another permitted use in the zone and therefore should be allowed, or no, it is not a similar use to one of the permitted uses and therefore should not be allowed, or yes, it is similar but will require another application such as a site design review or a vacation rental dwelling permit or something like that. A separate land use application essentially. So those are, those are the three options that, that you have tonight. And so when, when, whatever findings you make, you need to make sure that, that those findings are based off of findings of fact and, 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 you know, just like they always are. But specifically, you need to make findings that state the reasoning for your decision here. The termination of the planning commission that a proposed similar use cannot be accommodated in a given zone does not preclude an application by whether the applicant or another appropriate party for an amendment to the text of the comprehensive plan or development code. The application and fee were received and docketed on October 14th, 2021. Deemed complete on the 15th, the city has until February 14th or 120 days from the date. I should say 2022, by the way, or 120 days from the date the application was deemed complete. To approve, modify, and approve or deny this proposal, including an appeal decision if there is one. Noting of the planning commission, public hearing was mailed and posted on the subject property on October 25th, 2021. And this hearing will be conducted in accordance with section 17.196 of the CDC. Appeals are governed by the CDC section 17.204. Appeals must be submitted within 10 days of the final written decision. As mentioned, the subject property is zoned downtown district, Main Street. It's currently occupied by single-family residents that the applicant has indicated is, is currently used as a long-term rental property under section eight. Adjacent properties are all zoned downtown district, Main Street as well. The properties to the north and east are occupied by a commercial building with primarily retail uses. Properties to the west and south are all legally non-conforming, single-family residences. In this case, I want to add that while the downtown district is a commercial-based district, a lot of the homes or a lot of the uses in this area are residences and homes. Most are legally non-conforming, which means that they were present, such as, such as the, the one we're looking at today, prior to the adoption of, of the downtown district. So they're what, you know, essentially legal non-conformities. Someone was going to come in today and, and build a home on a, on a vacant lot within the district. They would not be permitted to do so because it is not a permitted use in the downtown district. So I just to clarify that unless there is any, in, in case there is any confusion there. Similar use determinations are based on the criteria at CDC section 17.160.040. Uses determined to be similar to permitted or conditional uses within a zone are subject to all applicable additional permitting requirements and development standards. And a similar use may be provided or authorized, provided that the applicant demonstrates the proposed use satisfies the following criteria. By criterion A states that the use is consistent with the purpose of the underlying zoning district in a similar in character, scale, and performance to uses specified in the underlying district. So the stated district or purpose of, of the downtown district is as follows. The downtown district is the historic, commercial, and civic core of Carlton. It's also a major wine processing center for the region. As such, it offers a unique opportunity to combine local commercial services, wine-making tourism-oriented services, and public amenities in an attractable, attractive, walkable mixed-use environment. In this case, the proposed use is a commercial and tourism-based use, which is interesting given that most, the majority of our, you know, short-term rentals are specifically allowed in residential districts. But, you know, I think that in this case, you can make the argument, and I think, you know, the, the applicant has made a good argument in, in the narrative that short-term rentals are in, are in some cases more similar with a, with a B and B or overnight accommodation, with both of which are permitted uses in the downtown district. So based on that, I find that the, the short-term rental use is, is pretty similar in character, scale, and performance to those other overnight commercial accommodations in that district. Secondly, as I mentioned, while the, the subject property neighboring properties within the downtown district are, are single-family residents, are occupied primarily by single-family residential uses, dwellings on properties within 100 feet of Main Street are required to be on the second story of buildings utilized for other permitted uses in the zone. The subject properties are for legal non-conforming use as the structure was constructed in the early 1900s prior to the development of the downtown district and, and these associated regulations. CDC section 17.164.070E2 allows the planning commission to authorize a change of use via type two procedure so long as the new use is of equal or lower intensity. Staff finds that the short-term rental is no more intense than a single-family use, meaning the intent of standard. It should also be noted here that the applicant will need to apply for a vacation rental dwelling permit should the planning commission find this use is similar to the permitted uses in the downtown district. So keep in mind here, you're not reviewing a permit for a vacation rental dwelling. You're simply making a judgment as to whether a vacation rental dwelling is similar enough to permitted uses within the zone to be allowed. So essentially, can an application even be filed based on these permitted uses? My criterion B states the use conforms to the applicable standards and limitations of the underlying zoning district. Section 17.30.050, which contains development standards for the downtown district, states that no front setback is allowed except for a pedestrian plaza landscaping or similar purpose. The applicant will be required to landscape the front yard as indicated, yard as indicated in her application narrative. There are no required side or rear setbacks in the zone. The property does contain existing residents, as mentioned. 17.30.06OB states that the standards of section 17.30.060 apply to all new standards or all new structures and exterior remodels of structures in the downtown district that are subject to site review. Site review is required only for that portion of a structure or development that is proposed to be changed. This application is for a similar use determination. There's no remodel or proposed remodel associated with this, so therefore the design review is not applicable. And neither are the specific standards, you know, assigned to the, to the downtown district in 17.156.05040C. So based on these findings, staff recommends the planning commission deem the proposed use similar to those permitted uses such as a overnight accommodation in, in the downtown district. And I've given some sample notions as usual, but again, just keep in mind that, you know, you have these, these following options. And again, that should this be approved, a vacation rental dwelling permit will need to be submitted as well. So you're not technically approving a, a, a normal land use application. You're similarly, you're, you're simply making a judgment as to whether this use can be deemed similar enough to be considered a permitted use in the downtown district. Thank you.
All right, we're next going to hear from our applicant or applicants this evening. Who, whichever of you would like to present to us, we'd love to hear from you.
Hi, I'm Natalie. Um, I mean, if anybody has any further questions beyond the narrative that was submitted with this application, you know, I'm an open book, so.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
You, you stated that you're going to remove the carport. I walk by this every day. So that you're going to remove the carport and there will be an off-road parking spot, single spot? Is that correct?
Yes, as, right now, as it sits, there's one car that can be parked in the driveway and that concrete pad extends further under the carport, which would free up another. If the carport was removed with the garage door taken down, that would be an additional parking space.
Okay.
I just want to, I just want to follow up again. I want to emphasize that again, we're, this will have to be reviewed by staff for things like parking and.
Sure, I was just curious what in her letter, what she was saying.
Sure, understood, thank you.
Okay, I get it. Yeah, thank you very much.
Jim had my only concern on mine, so yeah, that's something that I think comes up a lot about this parking, especially on that one-way street. You, you know, you're the owner and you, you see your, your current tenants. What's happening? So yeah, just concerned about the parking and maybe if this does work out for you that we do maybe include something in the literature for the, your future clients to obey.
Um, I, I help manage the Laughlin House here in town too, so I'm pretty familiar with, you know, the VRBO Airbnb sites. And it's not uncommon for people to use, have to use public parking, which I know there's, you know, some, a block away, so.
Thank you.
For the time being, I want to continue the public testimony component and then we'll follow up with any questions. I might have another question or two, or Bob might. This time I call for any proponents, anybody who wants to speak in favor or against, excuse me, proponents? Anybody like speaking for it? Any opponents, anybody would like to speak against this code interpretation or to provide contrary perspective? Any neutral undecided? Okay, just want to make sure we covered that dot. I did have a question or a couple of questions about when the last time the house was renovated or updated in any substantial way, do you have that information?
Well, I did, as the owner, I believe there was a split heating unit or a ductless heat pump. And that was put in professionally by a company from Salem, I think in December. And that would have had to have a permit. I believe you guys, I don't know if the permit goes through the county or the city. I think it goes through the city. That would be in your records or county records. And so that would have been in December. I believe it was in December, maybe January. And see, there was, to my knowledge, I, I believe I've owned, I've had the property since 2009 and I've owned it since 2011. There has been no major renovations. It's, you know, it is, it's an old house and it's been continually rented. And so I kind of don't really know the answer to that question.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did put a new roof on it. I think it was this year. Yeah, yeah, brand new roof, so.
I'm doing the same thing at my house, so I feel your pain there. It's no fun. Have you spoken with any of your immediate neighbors about that? It's certainly not a requirement, but just as far as, you know, neighborly relations have, have you received any pushback or anything?
No, in all honesty, I, because I, I don't live in Carlton, I live in Yamhill. I don't really know my neighbors. Wouldn't know who to talk to at the, I, I've been a lifelong Yamhill Carlton person. So whoever was at the downstairs of Dr. Miller's old dental office, I don't know who to talk to. I don't know who owns that now. I've been told that there's a new owner there. And I wouldn't even know who that is. So I don't, I really haven't, no.
And if you were to approve this application or deem this use similar as part of the BRD process, the neighbors are notified, so they're, they're given the opportunity to provide any comment they might have.
Do you have any questions?
No.
All right. Does anybody else have any other questions or any contributions they would like to make to this discussion? With that said, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. I also wanted to confirm we have not received any public agency letters, comments, or written testimony. So I will close the public testimony. And do you need to read the continuance thing at this point? That's the best thing, Kyle.
Sure, go ahead.
Just want to make sure we're covering all our dots here. Upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no, no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days for any participant, an opportunity, provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. If no continuance has been requested or no request made to hold the record open, the public hearing is closed and the record is now closed. If the continuance requested is more than a seven-day period, we discuss the length of the period with the planning commissioner, city council. Sorry about the order, guys. I just, I had a, a general thought that I, maybe staff could tell us about the number of other similar like locations that are offering overnight, whether it's B and B or vacation rentals in this area. I'm unfamiliar, is this, would this be one of the first or is this one of many?
So that's probably a better question for, for Amy. But I do know that because of the way the code is currently worded, which is what's causing, you know, us to have to go through this, this kind of interpretation is that the, the zones in which these vacation, short-term vacation rentals specifically that require the short-term vacation rental permit, so, you know, used as an Airbnb versus a, you know, strict motel or Airbnb or just normal B and B or what have you, are, are exclusively in residential districts, mostly the low-density residential districts because typically they refer more to, you know, homes that, that, you know, maybe people are going away for the winter or whatever and want to, or summer and want to rent out for a season. It's more of a seasonal use thing. But as far as vacation rentals in the downtown district, I can't imagine that there's too many that are at least, at least got the land, you got the proper land use approval. They may, there may be some, but in terms of what's permitted, I wouldn't imagine there would be too many because they would have had to go through the similar process in order to get, to get approval. So I don't have an exact number. I'm not sure if the city can provide a little more information on that, but that, that's kind of, those are my thoughts on, on the likelihood of, of where most of these are.
Yeah, the only comment I have, make on the second stories, a lot of those are used for vacation rentals. On, but I know that because I used to own second story at one time. But I, I think that those are basically, it's, it'd be the same thing. I just think about for people, you don't have to go anywhere. I mean, you don't have to get out, once you have to use your car, you're right in downtown. That's my only comment.
That was a very helpful comment. Go to your Bob. Any other, any other points we want to add this evening? Otherwise, we can, you know, invite a motion by anybody.
I move to deem the proposed use similar to the permitted uses in CDC section 17.30.020 based on the findings in the staff report and therefore permit the use.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Would you like to give us a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, and I would like to mention that Commissioner Fernandez Madrid, it arrives in its current meeting.
Hi, Annette, welcome.
All right, Commission Chair Anthony Stewart, how do you vote?
I vote to approve the motion.
Vice Chair Bob Graham, how do you vote?
To approve it.
All right, Commissioner Randy Robbins, how do you vote?
I vote to approve, but should we add that they need to apply for a vacation dwelling permit?
Yes, technically necessary, but that's a, that's a good, a good thing to just clarify for the, for the benefit of the applicant is that this will require a, a vacation rental dwelling permit.
All right. Commissioner Jennifer Nordstrom, how do you vote?
I vote to approve.
Commissioner Susan Terrell, how do you vote?
Abstained.
Commissioner Jim Mandy, how do you vote?
Since I made the motion, I approve.
And Commissioner Annette Hernandez Madrid, how do you vote?
I think she's voting that she's not going to be joining us on this one, but that's okay.
I'll think she put a hand up.
No, that's, that's the cursor.
Sorry, I'm driving, but I just unmuted. I'm going to vote to abstain because I would vote to approve, but since it is currently section eight, I hate to see more low-income housing taken off the rolls, so I think I'm just going to vote to abstain.
May I add something to that, please?
We'll go ahead and approve you and then we'll have a comment right after, if that sounds okay. It sounds like we have a passing vote with two extensions and the remainder approving it. So you are formally approved. Code interpretation twenty twenty-one dash zero one.
Yeah, you approved to make the application
Yes.
as a vacation rental and you know, you know, that's, they have their own requirements. We're not making names required. That's all we're doing here, right?
Yep.
Is that right?
Kyle? Yes, sir. That is correct. You are deeming the use similar to an overnight accommodation that's permitted, so similar to a B and B essentially. That's what you're, those are the findings that you are making based on accepting those in the staff report.
Yes. Ms. White, any final comments?
I, I also am somebody who's in favor of section eight and the tenants will be moving to another of my units that is I am creating to be section eight, that I, that is now section eight. So we are taking another unit that wasn't before section eight and it's now becoming section eight. So we're not losing those tenants and and I appreciate, I appreciate her comment about it, you know, watching, making, making room for people who are, you know, keeping housing available for people who are in that program. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate you joining us tonight. If you could follow up with staff regarding your vacation rental permit when time is right. We will look forward to seeing that on the horizon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our second matter tonight, I don't know if it'll be Kyle or Nicholas who are going to present this, but this is regarding a pretty substantial modification to the ordinance creating and defining and outlining what the planning commission is doing. So with that said, Mr. Peaslee, Mr. Jenkins, who who wants the microphone first?
I think I can take this one, if you don't mind. So the background for this, about two months ago, the city council requested that we do a revamp, just kind of look into and renovate the, the planning commission code because it was vague and had some odd provisions in it that were outdated. For example, the mayor was an acting member of the planning commission, but arguably was not allowed to vote because then she would make an appeals vote later on if it ever got appealed to the city council. And and there were a handful of provisions that just kind of didn't work or didn't make sense. And so we looked into it and decided to try and redo the planning commission ordinance so that it has more clarity and it expels, explains the the actual roles of planning commission with more depth. This was presented to the the city council, last city council meeting or a few city council meetings ago. And they said that it's, we should pass it to the planning commission and have the planning commission look at it, give their commentary on this, this ordinance. And then we'll pass it back up to the city council with planning commission recommendations and hopefully it'll get passed and we'll have kind of a more robust ordinance that explains how the planning commission acts and operates. With regards to the actual ordinance itself, that starts on page twenty of your packet. And this is, my comments are in red and I believe Kyle's are in blue. The first comment on section two explains that anything that's highlighted in yellow is essentially a new provision. It's something that that I placed into this ordinance from other locations. The right-hand comments on the side are meant to give additional context, essentially say where these provisions come from. There, there are very few, if any, provisions in this, this ordinance that are kind of created from whole cloth. Most of them are drawn from surrounding cities or surrounding planning commission ordinances. So to begin with, the first major change to the planning commission ordinance would be this one on purpose, where we expressly state what the purpose of the planning commission is. In this case, it announces that there is a advisory capacity to the planning commission as well as a quasi judicial role and that the planning commission is a part of ensuring that the city of Carlton grows and develops in an orderly fashion with adequate resources for housing, business, industry, transportation, recreation, culture, comfort, health, welfare of its population and so on, so that its residents and businesses enjoy a high quality of life. And this is just directly drawn almost exact language from City of McMinnville's planning code. The purpose statement is useful when there's kind of these revamps of a code or revamps of comprehensive plans because we can sort of arrange the rules around that purpose statement. Followed by that, the next significant change is in membership where this one has been, has kind of gone back and forth. And I didn't feel it my place to kind of make an affirmative statement in this case, whether or not appointment should be by the mayor and confirmation by council or simply by council. That one is is sort of a back and forth comment. If you look in in my comment number three, this goes all ways, depending on the cities that we look at that have these provisions. McMinnville, Gam Hill, Salem and Dundee are all city council commissions, whereas Dayton and Newburgh have mayor and that appoints and then the council approves. Mount Angel just does whatever it wants. I honestly don't know how they do things in Mount Angel. It just exists. Newburgh, for example, does public notice and requests that the public apply to any vacancies. City of Yamhill technically does that as well, but it's not required by their code. And back in the original version of Carlton's code, it was just simply a mayoral appointment. There was no approval requirement by the city council. So we have kind of a full range of options on that one. I guess at this point, let me pause and say, would you like to to kind of consider options as they hit? Or do you want me to just go through the the biggest changes to this and then let a discussion gush out afterwards?
What I think would be the most helpful is first to get a pulse on the comfort level of each of the commissioners with respect to the the original, what is currently enacted. It's front and back, you know, a page and a half versus what we have here. Does everybody feel comfortable talking about this in, in, in a large form after the fact, or do we want to just get a broad, you know, undertaking here? Understand it, reread this and then revisit it next week. What are people's comfort level for discussing and deciding tonight versus being a sponge tonight and then seeing where things go? Suzie, do you have any thoughts?
Um, I am fine with discussing it tonight and moving forward with it at the end of the evening.
Ms. Nordstrom?
Yeah, I, I think it would be nice to hear what are the, you know, kind of the broad strokes, what are the big issues? And then maybe have a discussion on, and we can sort of see what bubbles up as things that we have the most kind of concern about or questions about, maybe more questions or ideas. And then, and then I would be happy if if it seems like we don't have a lot of concerns to move forward.
All right, we'll go with Mr. Randy and Mr. Bandi.
Yeah, same feeling so far. There are not much that I'm going to bring up. So yeah, let's, let's try to get it all done tonight.
All right, Jim?
I'm right in sync with Randy. I read through the whole thing and I don't see a whole lot of issues there. So I am, I'm very comfortable with proceeding tonight.
Excellent. We'll have Annette.
Sorry, I had to unmute. I'm still driving. Don't mind going ahead with it tonight. I want to really give a shout out to the staff though, because it was very comprehensive with all the little bubbles off to the side, which explained not only your thought process, but also the source material. So that was very, very well done and very helpful. So thank you both Kyle and Mr. Peaslee on that. Yeah, I mean, I think I'll speak for myself, but maybe it's a general consensus that moving forward.
One thing I can about is I do feel like
I think that people aren't planned to be involved heavily, so I look forward to that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank you all, both of you, for your inputs here. I think it's, it's helpful and I think going forward, it'll be good for everyone.
I'm gonna let Bob give us a brief comment here, but I think what will be easiest based upon whatever he says, we'll just take each one of these and disagree. If we have a specific discussion, go for it. And then by the time we get to the end, hopefully we will have proved everything in line if Nick and Kyle are okay with that.
That works for me.
Bob had a comment, I think, on the first one.
Okay, on the very first one, I've been here and I've had a, people calling up and saying, would you please be a member of this? And then actually, we've had it where the planning commission itself actually took applications and did it. To me, I like the idea of an application, but I think it should go to the city council, like Newburgh says. It's about the fourth or fifth option down there. If you could sign, you know, I would like to have an application sent to the city council and then approved by the mayor and the city council. That's how I would suggest that be handled.
Can you give us a number on that, Bob?
Well, it's number A is, I remember it's an under comment by the good-looking lawyer up there. And his comment was, he listed, here's the application, McMinnville, Salem, Dundee, all have commissions appointed by the city council. I have no objections to that. My thing is, I want the council to accept applications to give public notice for vacancies and accept applications from the public for positions rather than appointing. In other words, you give an application and they have five applications, they decide who they want to appoint. It'd be approved by the city council, but I think people, I, I just, I just like the fact that when we did it with applications, you had a more, they had a feeling of what you wanted and you had a feeling of what you're getting into. That's just my thought.
We'll, we'll go on a go-forward basis, just going to say, is that okay with everybody else?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. I'll integrate an application process with approval by mayor and council and we'll have that draft as an option for the city council as well. Next up is going to be two twelve thirty B, which is qualifications. So this one is from City of McMinnville's code and a fair number of other cities have similar intentions in their code where they, they, they request that there be a broad swath of the citizenry of the city in the planning commission because the planning commission deals with commercial, with business, with residential, with various elements of kind of how the city exists and grows. A number of cities request that there be, if possible, the broadest expertise area possible in the planning commission itself. It, it's not a necessary provision, but it is one that several cities have chosen to put in their codes.
Any opposition by respective attendees?
No.
No.
Saying none? Looked like you did a good job, Mr. Peaslee. Next.
Terms. So term limit is a big one, and this one honestly goes all directions. Typically, terms are two to four years long. There are a few cities that have just as long as the person sits in the chair, they're in the office kind of terms. But most cities opt for something in the ballpark of about a four-year term of office. I believe Carlton at present does two-year terms, but I might be wrong about that. Or Carlton does four, okay.
Yeah.
Four-year terms still work for everyone?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I think there's a big learning curve to all of this and I think the more you can have consistency, so you're not having to re-explain why you're doing the certain things over and over again. I think, I think four years is a good, a good time and if there is some sort of rotation around with that, I think. Yeah, I like the longer terms for for just the learning of it.
Sure.
With that in mind, the next one, D, is is possibly a point of contention then, which is term limits. So in this instance, term limits are baked into a number of cities' codes. The reason why they do this is in most cases, they don't want kind of the city to be dominated by a cabal of individuals who have like their own interests or specific interests in mind. That doesn't tend to be the case, but it's, this is like in in Tammany Hall politics in New York, it is a concern. In Carlton, Oregon, it's not as much of a concern. Some cities also simply restrict people from having consecutive terms in of office, which means there has to be some sort of a turnover and some sort of a new blood that's brought in periodically.
Yeah, I, I definitely like, I mean, that's like twelve years.
I guarantee I'm not going to be around twelve years from now.
But I, so I'm not worried about, like, I think that's a totally generous term limit there. I, I wouldn't be opposed to some, some phrasing of, you know, that people could serve another, you know, term after some period of not. So whether it's not, you know, you can't serve more than three consecutive terms or whether it's, you know, you after three consecutive terms, you know, putting in some time before you could serve again. Because I also think that there could be a reason that someone, you know, twenty years later comes back on the planning commission due to expertise or or a different change in their life and that's something they want to get involved in again. So I could imagine, you know, because we are a small community, I could imagine, you know, not saying like, oh, you served that, you know, fifteen years ago, you can't ever come back, but I would like there to be the option for people to come in, new, new people to come in.
I, I agree. I, I think if we, if we just hold it to that you can never serve more than three terms, that we're limiting a wealth of knowledge that could help. So I would say no more than three consecutive terms and then that means that you get a break and then you could come back again. So that's just my two cents.
Power off.
I, I have actually a question. It, it seems like maybe are, are, do we typically have a full planning commission? Like, are people actively applying every time there's a vacancy? Or is it something that, there could be a time when, gosh, everybody's term limits are up and nobody's applying? I mean, is there some provision to allow for a full planning commission if that happens?
That's a good point. Just wanted to chime in there. That was something I was actually thinking about commenting on, but certainly with a small city, it's important to, you know, you want to have multiple voices, but you also want to have a staffed planning commission. So I'm not sure what the best way to address that would be. But that's definitely a concern that I would be cautious of.
Okay, if somebody would pop up, and I don't have anybody can do this, if you look at City of Carlton, the planning commission, it has, I think you're, you are actually out of the, out of the thing in one year. If you, could you bring that up? City of Carl, it had, everybody has a date. For some reason, my date was twenty twenty-eight. And I would, I want to take his year and I want him to have my twenty twenty-eight. But if you look and bring up that, it actually has, after our names, it has when our terms expire. Am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, Elise was there when I looked a couple of days ago.
This is starting to sound a lot like terms in the, in the former Soviet Union. They last as long as they have to.
Some people are four.
While we're taking a look at that, what I thought might be helpful just to think about is staggering, just like the initial terms here are, I, I think, because I think everybody here is going to have a little, oops, I lost you on the zoom. Oh, oh, I can't see myself, so I have to trust that I'm there. I think it would be beneficial to at least confirm and if we're going to, if the city council is going to do this, identify which planning commission members are going to be on what term and maybe have them in alternating
Here we go.
two-year. Okay, now I can't see.
So, okay, I'm sorry, I'm twenty-three.
Okay, we're going to share a screen.
Okay. But everybody else see how much expires.
Yeah, so we have
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
It should, it says twenty twenty-three, not twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, I, I lied. But, oh, actually, Annette's on for twenty, she's on to twenty twenty-five.
Four years.
Twenty twenty-three, then Anthony, Jennifer, Jim, and Randy all are on twelve. You guys go through, well, you're on twenty-first, right?
Yeah.
This year.
I get to be in and out.
You're in and out.
And so, the point being, I think we can, we can update this page and get everybody on a properly staggered timeframe so that when we're rolling over, we got appointments on a relatively set timeframe.
Yeah, I haven't even been on a year, so.
That's right. And I, so what I'm saying, I'd like to just subtract, I'll just go further.
He wants to give me.
I want to go to twelve thirty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Next month is it.
Next month is it. And then, you know.
So I, I think we can work with staff and work with the city council about confirming an updated slate of appointment dates. And whether it be two, you know, certain members go for two and some go for four. Uh, Chairman, or former Chairman Bob wants to transition away, so he could be one of the shorter-term ones. Uh, as far as the term limits, I think, I think those are fine for individuals that are coming in. Uh, if we're, if we're proposing on reallocating and re, re, um, re-setting the terms or between two and four, I think it'd be beneficial to say that it's three full terms as of the date of enactment, but that's just more procedural legal stuff. Mr. Peaslee, we'll let you continue.
Sure, uh, I can make a note, I, I, I guess, it, it seems like the, whether to make them consecutive terms or, or to just do staggering or not even have term limits. Uh, was there a consensus on that? It sounded like people were okay with not, no more than three consecutive, but in a small town, you might have issues filling.
Whatever everybody else wants.
Yeah, I, yeah, so to restate that, that where everybody's okay with the three, three full terms as being the limit for all of us who are transitioning, it'd be three future terms, but that can just be the dot, dot, dot that we don't have to include. Um, and then that we're gonna do four years and that will, will set half the counselors or the commissioners at two years and half at four years or, or in some fashion of reallocating like that.
Staggered terms is pretty typical in, uh, planning commissions.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I definitely like the no more than so many consecutive terms, because I do think if you have trouble filling, you can potentially go back to people who have served on it previously, but it also, it, it sort of forces the planning commission and the city council to actually try and recruit people. Um, you know, I've been in, in various situations where people just, like, people don't apply because other people can just sit there. And you sort of feel like, well, everybody's just been there forever, there aren't openings. So I think if there are sort of regular openings and that's on a regular cycle, it becomes easier to recruit some, like a few people every couple years. And it, it then makes it incumbent on us and the city to recruit new voices.
I, I, I totally agree with that. I think it's really important to have a circulating group of voices on with fresh ideas and, um, fresh lenses to look at issues. So I, I actually, I, I totally agree with that. Thank you. That's a great idea, Jennifer.
I think you have what you need there, Mr. Peaslee.
I think so. Uh, so next up is, uh, we're gonna skip vacancies. That is pretty normal. Uh, if somebody leaves early, um, moves out of town, resigns, dies, something like that, uh, the mayor typically fills those unexpired terms. Uh, this is where the, the staggering of terms is quite typical, where, uh, this, each individual seat on a planning commission has a set term. So for example, the seat that uh, Chairman Stewart is in, theoretically expires in twenty twenty-one, uh, which means that seat, whoever fills his spot would go till twenty twenty-five. And then if they cut out halfway through, they would, uh, the person that's appointed in would only go till twenty twenty-five. Uh, it's not so much something where someone gets four years at a time, it's based on the position itself. So that way they ensure kind of a consistent rollover and you don't get something where, you know, if the entire planning commission just quits all at once, you now have a planning commission that gets recycled once every four years. Uh, those things don't typically happen, but stranger things have happened. Um, section F is membership residency. So this one is kind of unique. Some cities, a number of cities actually have a stance that allows a non-resident to be on the planning commission. In this case, I drew the language from the City of Salem's, uh, provisions. In a sense, this outside member commissioner, uh, represents somewhat outside interests of the city. This, this can help, for example, in cases where someone wants to expand the urban growth boundary. If someone lives outside the city, they have a different understanding of what that means than someone inside the city. You don't necessarily have the same kind of internal viewpoint on it. Uh, this tends to be more normal in cities that have expanded water districts that include outside individuals. And so, uh, for example, in, uh, the City of Yamhill, their water district encompasses quite a few areas outside the city's urban growth boundary. And those individuals in that outside water district may have uh, very relevant thoughts on how the city should be planned or, or forward, like, moved into the future. Uh, but they can't necessarily be on the planning commission if there isn't a provision that permits outside uh, residencies. Uh, in this case, essentially every city I've seen, they max out at one person from outside the city who can be on a planning commission. But this is a provision that's entirely up to the council slash planning commission's discretion, whether you would like someone from kind of outside town to make decisions about inside town.
I'd make it just a quick point, and it's fine with me because my term is technically ending at the end of this year. Uh, but I live outside the urban growth boundary, so you lose a member in the chair, which again is okay. Um, but I, I have a Carlton address, but I'm not fortunate enough to be as close to City Hall, uh, but once a month.
Uh. That gives I'm changing my vote.
If I, if I understand it correctly, though, uh, you would still be within the city's limits, not, just not within the urban growth boundary. So you'd still be a, a resident of Carlton. So you can't get away that way.
It, it's all depends on how it's written. That's the seatbelt for me. So if, if that is a consideration, it need not be on my account. But if, if that is so desired, there can be language, not just for myself, but to account for uh, one outside person, and then I'd have, be able to sneak in for a little bit longer.
Clarify, if you are within the urban growth, or if you're within the city limits, you're automatically within the urban growth boundary, just not vice versa. So if you're living within the urban growth boundary, you can be outside of the city limits.
Okay, why don't we put that in here?
Okay, Kyle, how, how does somebody that's not a resident of Carlton be inside the urban growth boundaries of Carlton? I don't understand that.
So, um, without going too deep into what an urban growth boundary is and the complications with, with that, an urban growth boundary means is, the urban growth boundary is the line past which a city cannot extend. So, um, the City of Carlton city limits, uh, falls within City of Carlton urban growth boundary. Properties within the urban growth boundary but outside of the city limits can apply or submit an annexation petition to the city, which would allow them to become part of the municipal limits of Carlton. Um, but until that happens, uh, they're under Yamhill County jurisdiction. Um, cities usually should tend to have agreements with the county to ensure that that land is managed properly. Um, this is more important and, you know, specifically rural areas where, uh, if there's an area that, that's supposed to be sectioned off for development, that's not, that can have an impact on uh, land planning, but that's, I don't want to get into that too much. Essentially, an urban growth boundary includes land both within the city limits and outside of the city limits. Um, and it's, uh, specifically planned for the city's identified housing, employment, and industrial land needs um, by statute. So that's kind of the purpose of the, of the urban growth boundary. So I know it's kind of been confusing because you think urban growth, you think city, but the idea is that you cannot, any cities outside of the urban growth or any properties outside of the urban growth boundary are not even allowed to be considered for annexation. So I hope that makes sense, but that's kind of the, the thirty-second version of what the urban growth boundary is.
See, a hand up for, uh, Commissioner Fernandez Madrid.
Hi, I was just gonna, um, jump onto that too and say, um, when Linda Watkins approached me about an appointment, um, I had continuously owned property in the city for more than thirty years and was moving just outside the city limit. And she said, so I don't know, Mr. Stewart, if you and I are both, maybe we're breaking a rule without meaning to, um, that we're both outside the city limits. So just for reasons of transparency, I thought I should mention that.
Th- this rule doesn't exist in the current version of the planning commission code, just putting that out. This, it's all highlighted in yellow, this one was drawn from other.
Yeah, Bob and I were just laughing that, um, you know, we might end up with no planning commissions by the end of the evening. Um, but with, with that said, we, if we have a little bit of flexibility, it could be, because, uh, Annette, you are just outside of Carlton, is it a Carlton address?
Yes, I'm on, I am unmuted. I'm on Medoffrey Road.
Okay, excellent. So, um, you know,
It's a Carlton ad, but.
Uh, we could, you know, banter around if we want to allow for one or two individuals who have a, you know, that the primary residence is a Carlton address, even if they're outside UGB. That would seem to be an easy, uh, catch-all that would allow for the existing status quo to continue, but continue to have a focus on connection and meeting to the community. If for some reason I moved to Bermuda, uh, I won't be zooming in, but you know, I think the idea that whether it's kids or family members who are on the bus lines, who are a part of the community, I think, uh, I don't mind sticking around.
Um, well, what if we just made it like this, uh, of our great, these guys did a lot, a lot of work there. Just say, live within the urban growth boundaries of the city. And that instead of principal place of residence, be inside city, let me just say that.
I'll add that, that for Carlton, urban growth boundary and the city limits are essentially the same line. Um, so there are cities where that's, that, that's, the reason for that is because Carlton hasn't had a updated housing needs analysis or economic opportunities analysis that would have generated the need, the identification for the expansion of that urban growth boundary, and also because of the abundance of high-value farmland, that would make that expansion extremely difficult. Um, but the urban growth boundary of Carlton is, I think in almost every location, the same as the city limits. So there might be a few properties that are outside of the city limits within the urban growth boundary, but very, very few.
And we could also do simply a, a radius from the town, ten miles, uh, of residents for, for individuals, whatever.
There are a few, a few planning commissions do that, actually. They, they simply put a distance from the city limits that you can live. I've seen five miles for a couple cities, ten for one, uh, it, it's sort of at the discretion at this point.
Well, my side of town is around four or five miles, so five miles would certainly cover it. And I think that on the, on the Newberg side, that, that gets to the edge. I think that would push out, um, up towards, you know, up on the Meadow Lake, down south on forty-seven, way past Poverty Bend, uh, and then up to at least, was it that, is it Flynn Road? Is that the road between Yamhill and Carlton?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think you'd cover that area, if not a little bit further up into Yamhill, because there may be some crossover benefit for Yamhill community members.
Hey, can I add in, um, I think it's actually really appropriate to have, um, that radius extended because people who live, probably your neighbors, Anthony, or, you know, Annette's neighbors, they certainly interact in the city and benefit from the city and use city services as, as residents. And so I really think they need some representation on planning commission. And, um, I think it's totally appropriate to make sure we have, I mean, I think that's actually beneficial to have representatives from your areas.
Yeah. I would agree with that. And I'm just gonna jump in.
Well, sorry, please go ahead.
I just, I just had one more question and a clarification for, from Kyle, and I think it's important to note that the way the new highlighted, um, language states, it simply says that members shall have their principal place of, so in other words, you live within the city limits or whatever. But it, then it talks about the non-member or the non-resident, provided they own property. And so the first people, you just have to live in Carlton. It doesn't have anything to do about whether or not you own property. Because for instance, in my case, I've continuously owned property until I sold it. Now I rent. But that doesn't disqualify me. But if I was a non-resident, I'd have to physically own property. And so there's, there's two little things there that I, I think are worth bearing in mind is that members simply have to live within whatever the zone ends up being. And the non-resident person has to actually, you know, like be a landlord or whatever, but, but they have to own some form of property within the city. So those are the two things that I think are worth also keeping in mind.
Yeah, I think, uh, someone, I, I have to agree with Annette. I think someone that lives just outside the city, or just outside the UGB, I'm still very confused on this whole deal, but I would have to say that if they rent, they're as much, I mean, the Carlton is their city center. So if they're three miles outside of Carlton, it's still their city center. So, um, whether they rent or own, I think it's superfluous. I really do. Um, and, and I think you're getting a little defeat when you say they have to own. So.
Anybody should be disqualified. That's, that's exactly what I'm saying, is that nobody should be disqualified because they're not a property owner.
Okay, so, uh, are we all okay with that? The, the, before the first comma, members will have their principal residency inside the city limits, residing in city in the city for one year, except that two members may be non-residents uh, with a primary residence within five mile, a five-mile radius of City Hall of Carlton. Is that a reasonable number or line?
Just out of curiosity, does five miles actually put you into Yamhill though?
Probably.
I mean, I, like, I, I really want to be able to have rural Carlton residents, but I mean, as someone who has watched our school board be dominated by Yamhills, Yamhill, um, you know, Yamhill City residents, I, I would hate for our planning commission to get dominated. It's like, yeah. I mean, maybe unlikely, but I just,
Yeah.
We have, we have. Yeah, we have two, and presumably we would, will both be continued for a while. And so that two is not a quorum. And so so long as the other Carlton base, so, so long as the other Carlton-based commissioners can keep their cohort together and vote strong, I have a feeling we're not gonna have the, the title shift that we're fearing.
Okay, okay, but could, could we, could we not stipulate somehow that there is a maximum number of people that do not reside within the City of Carlton? So, two.
I mean, I mean, I like the, I like the radius, but I also, I mean, one of the things is, right? Um, you both actually have Carlton addresses, right? Which is different than if you live downtown Yamhill. Right? Your actual, you know, house address, even though it's not in the City of Carlton. So I mean, is there a way to sort of stipulate that? Or do we want to make it broader, that you don't have to actually be like your, your residence doesn't have to be a Carlton address?
Or we could go by zip code?
So Carl, so to clarify, I mean, so there's a few options here. You could say cannot be a Yamhill, City of Yamhill resident. That's, that's an easy one. But also, but also, just to clarify, zip codes and addresses are very, uh, volatile.
Malleable.
They don't usually reflect, you know, they're, they're kind of, uh, random, you know, postal networks and zip codes and that kind of stuff versus actual practical boundaries. Um, so I would say it's safer to either just have a set radius, whether that's, you know, however many miles, but, um, yeah, I mean, I would, I would also caution against having people that live within separate jurisdictions have, you know, a, a membership on the planning commission of a different. have, you know, a, a membership on the planning commission of a different city. That's just not something that, that's typically.
So I think five miles is a little bit of a stretch. But does that, what is, does, what does that do to our current selections here? Okay, so.
Could, could Kyle just comment on this? Would this be too radical to just do away with city limits and just say, principal place of residency within the urban growth boundary? Or, you know, that radius, whatever it is.
So, let me. Let me, let me know if you guys can, well, I guess you can't try my screen. But I'm just, I'm looking at the Carlton urban growth boundary map right now, and it is literally identical to the city limits. So that means that there are no properties within the urban growth boundary that are not within the city limits of Carlton, which means nobody could it be annexed into the city currently. I, in fact, this is a little bit of a tangent, so I apologize. I spoke with a property owner, just right neighboring the, the city limits that wanted to annex her property. And I had to tell her no, because there's no land within the urban growth boundary that is eligible for annexation. So as of now, the urban growth boundary and the city limits are one and the same. That's not the same for all cities. Certainly, it's not usual. This is just a function of Carlton not having done any lands needs analysis in, you know, thirty years. So.
But that doesn't, that leave two of our commissioners outside of that?
It sounds like that is the case, yes.
So, that, why don't we just, for the sake of brevity, only two people of the seven can be non-residents of the city, whether they're renting or owning. And in that case, they have to have a primary residence with an address that has the word Carlton in. And generally followed by OR nine, seven, one, one, one. But in the instance that for some reason is not wrong, it's a Carlton, Oregon address. Is that easy enough to write in there, Nick? Would that be workable?
That, we could do that.
Is that okay with everybody?
I like that.
Those Yam Hillians, keep them at bay.
I, I also think if, if in the future, right, the urban growth boundary does expand or something, like, it, it's, it's becoming more to whatever Carlton identifies itself as, rather than, you know, like, I agree, like, zip codes, I mean, what if a zip code splits and there's now two zip codes? You know, you have to worry about that. But I also think, you know, you're not going to have a Yam Hill address and be able to say you have a Carlton address. I mean, like, those are going to be to state, right? The different jurisdictions idea, I think, is, is a good one to think about. Like, if you're, if you, yeah, if you're, if Carlton is your address.
This is, so, so this is true, but I've also, I've worked for cities where people within the city limits of one of the cities have an address ending in a city that is not the one they live in. So I'm not sure what the specifics are of, of the zip codes and the mailing addresses in, in this area specifically. But I have certainly experienced it where people with addresses within the municipal limits of a certain city have addresses of adjacent cities. So just, I, I think that it's a good thought. I just would maybe ensure that that's practical in Carlton's specific case, because I have seen it where, where it hasn't been, where that can have issues. So I mean, that's, that's something that maybe we could look into, or someone could look into. But I just, something that, that would just give me a little bit of pause as far as looking at it. Just, that's something we recommend hard.
Well, and I'm also just wondering, because they have to be, you know, approved by the, you know, mayor and that. So I'm wondering if, if maybe in, in the application, I mean, this maybe doesn't go in the code, right? You still have these two people don't, who don't need to be within the, you know, it can be framed kind of as it is. Maybe, I don't know, we want, if we want to get rid of the, you know, ownership or however, or whatever distance we're going to make, or whatever, you know, criteria. But maybe that, when the city count, like, something in the application for the city council to appoint, if someone does not have a Carlton address, that they maybe have to justify their interest or their, you know, that their, you know, what is their connection to Carlton? So they can't just, you know, oh, I live in Yam Hill, so I want to be on Carlton's planning commission. So I mean, I do think there's, there's room for, there should, should, there should be room for the city council to be able to make some exceptions, to have a full planning commission that crosses all the, you know, that does all the things it says it's going to do. So I would, I would kind of prefer that some of that nuance maybe sit with city council if we can't decide on a really strict thing.
There is no definition to how the application would look in this case either. It's, that is undefined, so it could be as detailed as the council wants it to be in this case.
Well, I will, and I guess Annette will too, we'll just stick our heads out for the guillotine and see what happens next month. But for now, I think you've got the data that you follow up with the council on that specific point. Perfect. Want to jump us forward and get a couple of the other sections?
Sure, sure. So the next couple ones are pretty straightforward. G, membership limitation by profession. This one is not actually necessarily a discussion point. This is in the Oregon statutes. So I just pitched Oregon law into this application so that there's clarity on this, because it is technically a requirement. That basically says, you can't have more than two people on the commission who principally buy, sell, and develop real estate for profit. It's essentially a conflict of interests because part of your profession deals with planning commissions. And it's self-serving to a certain degree. Now, one of the other additions to that is no more than two members shall be engaged in the same kind of occupation, business, trade, or profession. That's also in the statute. It's pretty restrictive to a certain degree, and it doesn't really define, like, how broadly or how narrowly it looks at. Like, is a manager the same as a vice manager? If that's the case, then are they in the same occupation? Like, it, it doesn't go there. So we'll let later councils or planning commissions have that problem. But essentially, this is just statutory language. Removal, this one is the only real part in this that is a change is that there's a question on how many consecutive unexcused absences from regular meetings a member can have before they're just kind of automatically pitched out of the planning commission. Some councils, there are some codes permit up to four missed meetings. Others do three, most do three. McMinnville says two, so does Newburgh. Generally, two seems pretty restrictive, but restrictive kind of, it has to be two consecutive meetings. So somebody's missing a fair amount of change in a city, and if they're missing two meetings in some cases. But it's up to the commission or the council how many they want to kind of permit or not permit.
Two seems pretty reasonable. It seems like it's the median. Anybody have an opposition to two?
No, and remember, these are unexcused. So this would be that you haven't contacted anybody to let them know you can't be there.
Yep.
I'm good with that.
Right.
Excellent. So we'll, we'll just keep marching right along. Ex officio members is J. So this one is actually kind of a weird provision, and it's a unique one. It came from McMinnville and Newburgh that have similar provisions to this, where they essentially have someone who is a youth, twenty-one or under, who is appointed as kind of a one-year intern of the planning commission, where they get to kind of get a feel for what the process is. The idea is to get the community more engaged in the planning commission and to get people involved in kind of land planning and the understanding what this is younger in life, as opposed to, like, once you're, you've owned a house for twenty years, then you finally start thinking like, man, I wish I had a control over this. You'd have someone that starts thinking about use of property and, and maybe becomes a city planner as a career or something like that. That's, it's, it's designed as kind of a community engagement as well as an education tool. It doesn't have to be there, but I think it's a fun provision.
I love it so much. I think it's so great. And actually, my son-in-law is a teacher in Lapine, at Lapine High School. And in his business classes, he recruits ex officio members for the planning commission and for city council. And it's been a really great, it's been a great community builder there. So I'm, I'm very much for this, and I hope, I hope we work with the school board, or not the school board, the school district, to really integrate it into, like, their business classes or their government classes somehow.
I've seen it applied and done a couple of times very well as well. The only suggestion is, I've seen thirteen or fourteen-month appointments. So, and starting usually around April first, to where you'll have a little bit of crossover between the year prior and the year after. I'd specifically seen this a few times in Florida, and I always thought that was nice. So the outgoing, presumably upperclassman is introducing the next one, and then they're both at the meeting. And then there was a certificate of appreciation, and again, as part of moving that forward. And then the, the two peers essentially were doing a handoff. It's another option that I'd seen done before, and it made for nice ceremonies, which is part of the pomp and circumstance behind this.
I like that idea too.
People okay with that?
I would, I would jump in here real quick, and it would be very nice to have this for planning, because some of the other committees I've been in, most notably the skate park, the pool, and then even the pedestrian safety, we had youth in Carlton as part of that. And they bring a very unique perspective, and it really does, as I think Suzie said, encourage buying at an early age. And I think it limits a lot of the frustration that some younger people can feel that things are just done to them and that they have no voice. So especially when it's topics that directly concern, and so I would be.
I agree. Having come from a large city, I never felt like I was at all connected to anyone within government in that city. So, and as a student who was majoring in political science, it made me very frustrated that there was just no avenue to actually get into it. So I think it's a great idea.
Commissioner Graham, did you have a comment earlier?
Well, I just thinking, maybe, from, oh. I guess I was thinking it'd be nice if we could have it, the term go from May thirty-first to May thirty-first, because they would be in school there. If you go beginning June the first, most of the kids, quite a few kids have jobs in the summer and might not even be available.
I think it's essentially, they essentially mean it's a one-year term.
I know it's a one-year term, but I'm trying to, they have a beginning here. Yeah, well, it'll work. Yeah, it's fine. That's, just put down the old age, okay? Don't cross that.
I think he has, I think he actually has a good point. It should start in September.
It started in the school year.
Yeah, it should start in September so that they can have guidance from their teachers so that we can work with the school district, so that we have, yeah, so that they can.
Then I might argue it should start in October, so that the school district can find someone.
Yeah, so October to October. Yeah, yeah, good point, Jennifer.
Are we anticipating this would be like a senior every year? Or are you looking for a freshman, or are we going to leave that open?
I think leave that open. Who knows how many, I think, interested. I mean, if we limit it too much, you might get nobody. Especially, I mean, our school district's tiny. And if they, if we, yeah.
Well, especially if we don't let the Yam Hillians join.
You know, that, that could be a limitation, is a, somebody in the school district, in, in the high school or, you know, somebody in the school district that has the same limitations as Carlton too, if you wanted specifically that.
So I, I'm not sure if that matters for this.
And I actually think no specifically for that, because we are a unified school district. And I think for the purposes of a school and for the purposes of young people learning, I think we need to be a unified school district.
They're ex officio, like, it's fine. But I guess what I would suggest is, I wonder if this kind of proposal, like, if, if this kind of wording could be taken to Yam Hill. And what would be really cool is if Yam Hill has the same program and they could recruit two students a year from the school district. Maybe, I mean, maybe they're even both from Yam Hill, but, or maybe they're even both from Carlton. But, you know, like, one on Yam Hill, one on Carlton. I mean, I think that could be a really kind of cool experience for students.
Right.
It could be very unifying.
Yeah. So Kyle and Nicholas, can we make sure that this is, these ideas are brought up before city council so that they can for sure hear these ideas?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I've, I've got notes that I'm taking on this. And I'll, I'll present an updated version of this to the city council next month, I think.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so then the next up is training. So training, we have essentially from Newburgh's code, which says, when you become a planning commission member, there will be training, and, and it will be done. And even if you're a planning commissioner who's been on the commission for a while, there is kind of a re-upping training that will happen each year. The, the stance as it is, is to do that for once every six months to do a training. Or no, to have the commissioners do a training within the first six months of their appointment or their, their election to the role. But that's, that's kind of the, the stance that we've taken at this stage is to have, not mandatory, but like guaranteed training for commissioners. Next up is L. L is, I took it from Salem's code. To be honest, oaths of office in cases like these aren't actually binding in any way. But it is nice to have something like an oath that says, you know, hey, you're really doing something here, and you will be affecting the city and people. And so at the beginning of, the, the idea of this provision is that at the beginning of the first meeting of a planning commission, when you have a new appointment, the new member takes an oath to uphold the constitution, the state constitution, the laws of the state, city charter, the ordinances of the city, and to make sure everything that they do is impartial to the best of their ability.
Hey, Nicholas, can I, can I go back to the training bit? Because they actually very much appreciated when you gave, like, about the quasi-judicial thing, hearings and those things. And it would be brilliant if those were always given at the beginning of a term so that we don't have a debacle of a meeting and then have to go back and fix things. Do you know what I mean? Because I, I think all of us were like, wow, we, we're doing the best we can, but we don't. I mean, I know I wasn't fully prepared for that, despite going through the online training and things. So having you have those, those trainings, so an expert in whatever we're about to embark on, it would be really nice to have the end of the meeting before a tutorial, so that we're prepared. Or even an online that we could watch, like, if, if it becomes, we're going to have a quasi-judicial hearing, have something pre-recorded that we can, maybe from you, and, you know, we can, and then at the beginning, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. One of the things about that, that complicates it is essentially that the goal for these kind of ordinances is that this lasts forever, or as long as the city lasts. So we, with that, the premise of most ordinances is we don't write them with an intent to change it. So this could be in place for, if the city of, like, Carlton's original planning commission code is any indicator, it can be there for forty or fifty years, and it might outlast me. And then the question is whether.
Yeah, so if you had, if, if the provision then was that there would be an online tutorial that was available for commissioners in anticipation of whatever's coming up, right? So you just have a stock, like a bank of recorded tutorials that are really specific, that, that we could, you know, kind of like an encyclopedia of what we need to know. Does that make sense?
Yeah, like a, a video bank for specifically the topics that are being covered. Like, if it's a, a zone change, Kyle and I will do our two-part comedy bit and explain how the zone change works, and then that'll be the video that gets used for the next.
Exactly. So, so as commissioners, we can go ahead and say, oh, gosh, this zone change is coming up. I'm not really clear on how the procedure works. I can look that up, click on it, watch it, and then I'm prepared for the meeting.
Can I, can I hop in? Nicholas, please correct me if I'm, I forget exactly what the, the, the language said. And I know you just read it out at one, when you read it out the other. But I think that what we're trying to get at specifically here is that we have, not necessarily with this planning commission in particular, but many planning commissions have an issue with when training is voluntary, they just don't do it. And so the goal, I think, at least from, from my perspective, is yes, I think that's a great idea. But we need to make sure that as soon as someone is appointed to the planning commission, that they are doing the mandated training so that they understand type one, type two, type three, type four processes, their roles. They, I think, in particular, need to be, you know, online, again, online is great, but it's hard. You can't ask questions online. You can't do any of that stuff. So just from my perspective, I think it's important to not only have these, but have them nearly on appointment and preferably in person. So that really, you know, we can make sure that everyone's prepared and that, you know, people aren't giving the.
people aren't given the option of passing this up. Because I think that stuff is really, really important and we need to make sure that everyone's aware.
Can I jump in? Yeah. Can I jump in there? Because I've got a little bit different perspective. But I think if we were very succinct, because harkening to everything that that Suzie just said, from my own experience, I remember having the conversation with the mayor. And I think one of the city council members, or maybe it was the city manager, because because the training was like three half days. And I just retired tonight after twenty-five years with the county. And I did not have the luxury of taking three half days, and certainly not during a pandemic, to attend trainings, whether they be online or in person. So we do, all of us owe a debt to both Kyle and Mr. Peaslee for bringing us up to speed quickly after a couple of debacle-y type things. But I also want to underscore what Kyle just said, that, you know, I deal with this in my work, too. If it's, if it's offered, you know, there's always going to be people that just never get around to it for whatever reason. But I think if you simply said in that training and how you guys slice and dice it, whether it's Zoom, whether it's pre-recorded, whether it's by topic, I would leave that up to you. But I think if you simply said under K, training, instead of the city shall offer training to planning commissioners to educate them in their duties and leave off the rest of it, and you guys can design that, you know, as it needs to be. You could simply change one word and say, the city shall mandate training to planning commissioners to educate them in their duties, period. And then you guys can can co-design the appropriate materials as things come up, you know, by topic or however you guys want to want to design it. But I really want to say again, there was a lot of value in the live training. Because watching something on PowerPoint is guaranteed to put people to sleep. And it was very germane to what we were doing and we had, you know, real-time ability to ask questions and to to reiterate things if we didn't quite understand it. So I think simpler is better, but again, to what Kyle was speaking to, I don't think the city shall offer the training. I think the city shall mandate the training and then bada boom bada bing, however you want to design that training.
I think that's a, that's a good point. And I think that with planning commissioners in particular, I think it's, you know, important that the city communicates with, you know, regarding time and place and maybe not having three sessions, maybe having one and making sure the planning commission is available at that time. And, you know, all that stuff. So I agree that that's that's important as well. But yes, just wanted to.
Given that you want this code to be, you know, usable sort of for the for the long run, you don't want to say how that has to happen. You just want to say that it does. And then whatever, you know, whatever means turn out to be the most valuable. I mean, how many of us would have predicted five years ago, all these meetings would be on Zoom, right? Like, if it was mandated that you had in-person meeting, like you, like you can't, you know, we have just different, there's different things that can happen now that we wouldn't necessarily have predicted. And all you want to make sure is that there is a training that has to happen and that the commissioners are required to do it.
You know, I think that I'd add is I think it should be within a certain timeframe of appointment. But other than that, I think that's a
That holds everybody to making sure it happens.
At present, the provision stands where the city offers the training. And then it's the duty of the planning commissioners who are new to do this training within thirty days. And for people who are reappointed or people who have been there for some time, to do that training within the first six months. So thirty days for new people has to happen within six months for people who are being re-upped has to happen. But it's it's a duty of the commissioner to do that.
And and I agree that live is is way preferable to online. And currently, like I know I did one online from the state of Oregon when I first became appointed, became a commissioner. And then I did one evening Zoom on quasi judicial hearings. I don't know, it was a couple of months ago, I think. But having it live and also having it within, because most of us work, just saying. And it's, you know, taking a day of vacation to go to a planning commission training. And it seems like it historically, it's been pretty inflexible about. Like, it's either the online, take the, you know, the class that's online. Or I mean, but honestly, if it was offered on a Saturday or a Sunday afternoon, you know, when when we're not at work and don't have job duties would be preferable, so.
Well, and again, you know, talking about work schedules, I have, I have had the world's weirdest, you know, work schedule. I work all weekends. There's two days a week that I work till eight o'clock at night. Tonight, I tried to get out of there at six, but everybody was, you know, high-fiving and doing their thing. So I apologize again for being late jumping on there. Twenty-five years, what a wild ride it's been. But not everybody, you know, fits the nine-to-five Monday through Friday schedule. And yeah, I mean, it just, it was, it was never going to work. So I just, again, really appreciated the sort of on-the-job training that we all got. And would would absolutely say that I would prefer that, you know, and maybe you guys can come up with some kind of codified you know, live Zoom training where you touch on all the things that you know are going to come up. But yeah, like five years ago, did we know that all of a sudden there'd be all of these subdivisions and all of these applications? And, you know, this is all really come on very quickly. So it's been, it's been a wild ride, but it's certainly been very interesting, so.
Well, just quickly, I did the OLCC Zoom training and was promised a completed PDF or whatever document of all of the sessions, got none. So I was hoping I would get them, never saw them. So that training was good, but not great because the follow-up didn't happen. Now, for whatever reason, I don't know. But training, that training was valuable, but it would have been a lot more valuable if I'd had reference to go back to in a physical form in my hand. And I didn't ever get that. So that's my, my, my side of the deal. I think it's really important to have the training and I'd love to see it be a mandatory thing. We just have to find a way to work it into where it doesn't put too much onus on timeframe that people who are really wanting to get it, don't get it or can't get it. Or whatever. So, so, so I'm in favor of it wholeheartedly. And I would like to see it be complete. I was upset by the fact that I never saw any PDF documents from the training I went through.
Okay, I can talk with the city council and see what the plan is for creating some sort of like a comprehensive training process. I don't know if I ever went over this in the past, but in my past life, before I was a lawyer, I was actually a high school teacher. And all throughout law school, I wrote training courses for Realtors. So if it comes down to it, we have to like create our own kind of from-zero training course. That was my specialty in in my previous life in Washington. So maybe we can, we can put something like that together. But it'll be kind of at the council's discretion because that can be, putting together a whole training course can be a process. But we'll, we'll throw something like that together if we can, if we can manage it.
That would be brilliant. Thank you.
So that's training and oath. The next kind of relevant thing to consider is the secretary. This is section two twelve oh four oh. City shall provide a secretary who keeps an accurate record of all commission proceedings. So this is pretty typical. It's not changed from the way Carlton currently has it. But it is worth noting that other cities allow the commission to select their own secretary. Carlton and Yamhill and Dundee do that. For others, it's assigned to the commission by the council. They they just select it. And in other cities, the manager selects the secretary for the commission. So kind of, it depends how much discretion the commission wants to have over choosing their own secretary. Yes.
And I just move, we just accept it as written.
Keep it as is. Works for me. That's that excellent. Terms for officers, how long do we want officers to to hold their jobs? For example, the chairperson or the vice chairperson. In some cities, it's literally just as, until somebody else steps forward, you're in that seat. And there is a certain degree of 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 efficiency in that model. Other cities, they do it once a year. You have to pass a torch somewhere or potentially re-up the person who's holding the torch.
I like, I like keeping the person that's currently doing it in that position. He runs a clean meeting, works well. And I think there's a distinct advantage in having someone who is familiar with the proceedings and can move a meeting along. So I I like it the way it is that they just stay there until somebody else, until they resign or somebody else expresses an interest.
Okay.
I think you need to have
That right now, doesn't it? What it says is they serve terms of one year or until the successors are selected. If those successors have been elected, I guess he would go on forever, right? Isn't that right?
If you don't select a successor, you would be there forever. The the term, the meaning of that one is you'll serve a term of one year. And then usually at the end of the year, there's some sort of a rumpus while you're selecting the new officer. And it could take two months or so. And during that two months, you're still in the office until your successor is appointed. That that's kind of the idea behind those ones is it's, it's you're holding the place until your next person comes in. But you're technically only, you've only signed the dotted line for one year.
And also, doesn't, doesn't D segue into E? I mean, that's what I, you know, that you wouldn't have one without the other. So there is a mechanism for replacing an officer. And there's some flexibility in that because, you know, things happen. I mean, people move or whatever, die.
Entertainingly, the previous code did not have a term for replacing an officer. It just said they would be in for a year. And then if anything went wrong, it just kind of left it blank.
Well, I think there should be a method by which we we address that, so I
In this instance, does, does a majority vote by people to, if they wanted to boot a chairperson for egregious acts or something like that on camera, you could vote and kick him off?
I think so.
Well, I mean, I think that's what E, well, it's not, that's all purpose of E. I don't, I don't take it for egregious behaviors. I'm just saying, I'm reading here and it seems to segue into it where it just says a majority of the commission, you know, may replace there or vice chair for another member. It doesn't say why or how come, but just at any time. So there's a mechanism. That's the important thing.
And we've got this one currently as anytime, any reason. I haven't seen it in other codes, but in theory, we could put something in that could replace them for reasonable acts. Or would you just prefer to leave it absolutely?
I think you just leave it because if you get, if it's really unreasonable act, you're going to get a majority of the commissioners to to take an action. So I don't think you need to specify that.
I don't, I don't think has to be a topic because there could be other completely, you know, non-volatile type reasons for replacing somebody.
Right, sure.
Yeah, they could be put in jail. Don't, don't laugh, that happens.
Okay, so that, we'll leave that provision the way it is. Next up, two twelve oh five oh, this is about meetings, specifically kind of the rules of engagement for meetings. Commission will meet at least once a month unless business does not require such a meeting. So if there's nothing on the agenda, the meeting can be canceled. And that's the chairperson with the consent of the city manager can just cancel the meeting if there's nothing to deal with. As cities grow, this becomes less likely, but you know, it happens.
Should we say something about a timeframe, like, you know, within a few days or twenty-four hours of the scheduled meeting or?
Twenty-four hours sound good, people?
Since we meet on Mondays, we're going to know whether or not there's business by close of business, the Friday proceeding. So I think that would be reasonable to say like by noon on the Friday proceeding, we're going, staff will have plenty of time to send out the message. And it's not crunched. And if there's a circumstance where people can otherwise avail themselves of other activities on Monday, they have a few days to plan and alter accordingly.
Yeah, that would just be nicer to, you know, be a bit more considerate of the the committee members.
Okay. Public meetings notice, this one I added in, this is essentially just public meeting law. It says that the meetings shall be open to the public. You have to comply with public meeting law. Give notice in the way that is required by Oregon law. This, that's largely just statutory language. Quorum, this one. We put in an overt statement here to specifically mention what are called serial meetings, which is, for example, if Commissioners Nordstrom, Terrell, Bandy and Robbins all sent an email to each other discussing whether or not they wanted to approve like this ordinance or something along those lines. There's four of you discussing a matter that you would be voting on later, which technically makes it a quorum that required, because you're a public body, you need to give prior notice to the public whenever you make a decision or lead towards a decision that is this final. So even if you have an email chain kind of talking about things that you'd like to do in the future, or for example, this has become a problem or it was a problem, and I believe Gresham, it might have been Tigerd. There were Facebook posts, we're on a Facebook post, commissioners or council members just chattered along back and forth and eventually came to some sort of a shaky conclusion on how they would vote, but did so on Facebook. And that's technically a violation of public meeting law. Because you need to let the public know twenty-four hours in advance when you're going to be discussing things so the public can give comments and all that. And so this is just us saying that in the code itself so that it's there. And and you won't need as much kind of a, a, a public meetings, a training process in in there because it's in in writing. Meeting conduct, this is, McMinnville has this provision and it's a little over the top. But the rules of parliamentary order and practice, as are in Roberts Rules of Order Revised Edition, this is the stuff where you can make point of inquiry, parliamentary inquiry, those kind of things. It's, it's the most classic approach to how to run essentially a media, a popular democratic meeting where voting is involved and there is public hearings and things like that. Most city councils run by the Roberts Rules, I I just put them in here. It's not necessary, if you'd like to remove the Roberts Rules, so you don't ever have to hear about them, that's okay. A lot of cities have done that, but it is there. And if you want a really exciting read, you can buy yourself a copy of it.
The only question I'd have for you, Nick, would be, is, is this any, is there any link between, you know, if we say, okay, we'll have Roberts Rules, but then we miss an issue? Is that somehow impact or or augment the appealability of any decision that might otherwise have been arrived at appropriately by the planning commission?
No, it wouldn't change the end results of the planning commission. It just changes the procedures in the middle. It it kind of gives you a scaffold to build meetings around more than anything else.
Is there a format that is less formal that you would recommend or that you're you're familiar with? Or since this is the standard, would it be, you know, accepted practice to just accept it as is?
The two approaches are Roberts Rules or no rules is is kind of how most cities do this. Roberts Rules are the ones where you can, you very distinctly can come in. And there are certain points where people can talk and certain points where only the council discusses and things like that. No rules is where the commissioner just kind of gets to run the rodeo and then decide, the 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 chair chooses how the meeting is run. There is benefits and detriments to either direction. Roberts Rules are more formal and there is technically a procedure to follow. Non-Roberts Rules, you know, stuff can go back and forth for quite some time. And if somebody gets stuck on an issue or somebody in charge really wants to hear about something, it can, you can keep on going over the same issue over and over and over again until the person in charge decides to let it go.
I think I'm okay with with either, we can leave, leave it as as written. Or we could make it, you know, leave it to more informality. Do any of the other commissioners have a burning position in either direction?
I've been dealing with Robert Rules of Order since I was in high school. So I'm sort of familiar with it because I was involved in high school politics.
It's, it's a well-developed set of rules, I guess, is my, my one statement for Roberts Rules is they, people have been working with them for quite a while. So it has been a well-polished stone. But, you know, we're Americans, so every once in a while we do our own thing.
Nicholas, you are very gracious this evening. I love some of your references. I would just say I prefer the more informal. I mean, I'm very familiar with Roberts Rules. But I prefer the more informal because I think it promotes more civic engagement from people, not necessarily on the committee.
I wouldn't disagree with that. I just think it, it gives a little bit of framework to the process. I, you know, I don't know that it has to be as strict as, as reference rules is to the T, but.
I can change the language of this. So it says, the meetings of planning commission shall be governed, uh, by the rules of parliamentary law and practices of Roberts Rules of Order Revised Edition, to the best of the council's ability or to the, the greatest extent feasible or reasonable, something along those lines that gives it flexibility where that we say that's what we're aspiring to, but it's not necessary.
Just, um, before we jump to the next section, the responsibilities and powers. If we could back up to, uh, see the location of meeting, since we've been having Zooms for a year now. Um, I know that two of you are there, our hosts at the city hall. Um, but do we need to, um, actually enumerate something addressing what we're doing now? Or that could go into the future? I mean, it's, we're sort of in uncharted waters, but, um, see as it's written, doesn't really, um, bind us in terms of how we're currently operating.
So technically the Oregon legislature has passed a bill that into, you know, I believe beginning January 2021, city councils and public bodies, uh, to the extent feasible, must make these meetings available, uh, in digital format. So I can integrate language from that one into this provision for location that, that kind of, I guess the more, the, the location of the meeting is more along the lines of the city council will assign a location where the, the planning commission has the right to use it for storage and meetings and things like that.
It does say, it does say if possible. So obviously in the pandemic, that hasn't been possible.
Well, I mean, we have our chair and our vice chair there and our secretary who's keeping our minutes. But it just, you know, try, trying to look into the future. I don't know if going back just to city hall is going to best serve the people of Carlton. And as Nicholas just alluded, um, that there will be digital hookups available moving forward into the future. So I don't think it's like something that's going to discontinue. And I think that that's important to note that there will be these alternate modes of, you know, not the location necessarily, but of attending the meeting so that you're not wedded to having to be in person at city hall to attend a meeting.
That's a good point. I think Nick's got the, the notes that he needs to take that to council, right?
Yeah, I, I think it's in the public's interest as well as ours, our own. Not everybody always has the ability to get to city hall and not, and certainly the public doesn't always want to go to city hall. They'd rather be hanging out at home, but they want to be involved. So I, I think we just have to, as an internal plan, we have to plan on zooming all our meetings, including, I would hope the city council would do the same.
Sure. I'll, I'll monkey with the language to integrate that as best as possible. Um, that, that shouldn't be too bad to add in. Um, and I'll, I'll do my best to make sure I reflect exactly what you guys were talking about.
Thank you, Nicholas.
Uh, special meetings is the next one, which is the last part of the meeting section. Essentially this is statutory language. Oregon says there will be special meetings and this is the way you do them, 24 hours notice at least. It needs to be given in the, the standard public notice, uh, format, which is me, uh, paper of general circulation, uh, or posted in a central public location, something along those lines. Uh, so that's just Oregon language and we have to have that in there. Uh, the next part is where things get a little interesting and this whole section is brand new in Carlton. So 212 60 is.
Got to pause you for a second. We are coming up on 7:55 PM and Bob's prediction that I'd be eating my hat has proven correct. Where he's going to take a five minute recess for everybody to, uh, check on plumbing or do what's necessary. So we're going to go, uh, and pause over recording. We'll come back in five minutes and give you just a few minutes of a break yourself. Thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
Are now, we are now at eight o'clock. We are back from our, um, momentary respite and Mr. Peaslee, you can dive us back into responsibility and powers. He gave us a good warmup.
I, I, I will say that it might feel like there's a lot of packet left over, but half of this is just a repeat of the document without any notes. So we're actually close to done. Uh, just, just warning everyone here at the outset. Uh, so responsibilities and powers. I broke this up into two separate sections, several separate sections actually, which is different from how the code has been done originally. And, uh, the intention of this is to split out the powers of the planning commission into the advisory capacity, the quasi judicial capacity. And then what also I, wandering through the comprehensive plan, I found out that, uh, you guys are also the committee for citizen involvement. Uh, and you have been from the start since, since like 2006. Uh, and, and we just didn't know about that recently. So, uh, we're, we're adding that on there too. Uh, as for advisory commission powers, this is something that I've essentially drawn from largely, uh, the city of Salem. They, they have a, a very clear list of, of powers that they grant to their, uh, their planning commissions, but it's also taken from ORS 22790, which is, uh, the provisions relating to planning commissions broadly on a state level, when they just describe what all a planning commission can be. So many of these are just things that are requirements of something that a planning commission must be able to do. Several of them are from city of Salem. Uh, and then I also left the note with powers, uh, here as, as comment number 22, that Mount Angel lets their planning commission just literally write their own bylaws. So the, there is a wide range in how much flexibility, uh, they have and what they can cover and can't cover. It just kind of depends on what is permitted or not permitted in the code itself. And here we're opting for kind of a more cabin and descriptive approach to the powers of the planning commission. Uh, so in this case, you'll have the authority, advisory authority, which this is where you would go to the city council and say, hey, our advice is to do the following things. Uh, you don't have to, but we are your planning commission. We're your eyes and, and, uh, ears on the ground. And this is our opinion of the, the best move you could take. And the city council gets to, uh, act upon your, your advising, advising. And that is in regards to suggestions for, uh, widening, extending, uh, streets, sidewalks, boulevards, parking congestion, kind of traffic oriented things. Altering setback lines on private property, recommending public, uh, to public authorities for the future planning and beautification of the municipality. So this is parks and recreation sort of stuff in a lot of cases. Uh, recommend to the city council that, uh, plans to promote industrial and economic needs of the community. That is just straight statutory language. It's one of the things that's, that planning commissions are obligated to do is recommend, uh, those sort of improvements. Uh, recommend the protection and assurance of access to incident solar radiation and wind for potential future electric generation or mechanical application. That one was not in the statute until recently, but that is actually statutory language. So one of the things the planning commissions are obligated to do these days is to ensure that, uh, if people want to or, or request it, they have the ability to do solar or wind generation to a certain degree. And so, uh, the, it's, it's kind of in there as, as one of those forward looking economic or environmental policies of the state of Oregon. So one of the things that you guys can do is recommend to the city how to improve, uh, access to solar or wind or, or renewable green energy essentially. Uh, your recommendations will be with regards to how to advertise industrial advantages. So draw people in to bring industry to the city, to encourage industrial settlement within the city, uh, to make economic surveys of present and potential industrial needs for the city. So this is one of those ones where you can request that the city council do on one of those economic needs surveys, uh, somewhat along the lines of what Kyle was talking about earlier with the, uh, the urban growth boundary hasn't changed in Carlton. And a lot of it is that we just haven't done kind of the studies that necessarily need to be done in, in some time. And this is part of that would be an advisory role of the planning commission is to say like, we're, we're running out of space and we should probably look into that sometime. And then that's, that's one of the advising rules. Uh, you would also have the, uh, advisory role of studying existing industries and the idea is to strengthen or change employment in the city. Growth of industry, industrial, uh, parks or industrial regions of the city. Uh, prepare as necessary legislation that will implement purposes of the comprehensive plan. So if you have, uh, for example, parts of a comprehensive plan that you think need to be changed, part of your advisory role is to suggest that to the city council because it is eventually the city council's decision to change the comprehensive plan. But if there's something, for example, that you look in the comprehensive plan, you say, well, I noticed that it talks about agricultural holding spaces, but our agricultural holding spaces in the city of Carlton are being used improperly and this provision should be changed in the following manner. Your suggestions to city council are part of your advisory roles to say what needs to change in a comprehensive plan for that 20 to 40 year future looking change of the city or, or, uh, uh, kind of plan for what the city will look like. That's one of your advisory kind of capacities. Uh, you'll also have the advisory capacity to review capital improvement programs, uh, for consistency with the comprehensive plan. It's the overarching document that kind of decides what things should look like. And then to generally study and propose measures that are advisable for the public interest, health, safety morals and such on in the city. So, uh, kind of a broad and a very wide ranging list of things that the city, the planning commission does in its advisory capacity. And these are where you would like take a document to the city council that says, we all signed it. We think it's a great idea. Please make these changes. We think it would help the city. Uh, the more kind of pressing ver thing that, uh, most people think of when they think of a planning commission is the quasi judicial power. This is where the planning commission serves as, uh, part of land development proposals, uh, public hearings and do the various things for permitting, uh, or site design reviews and those sort of, uh, applications. That is the quasi judicial power. So we've broken it into advising where you're giving advice to the city council, or city council, and then quasi judicial where you're making actual decisions that have essentially final hold unless someone appeals it to the city council. Uh, in addition to that, you're also part of the committee for citizen involvement. Uh, that one was already in your comprehensive plan. So that's one, one of the comprehensive plan. Uh, and this is part of the Oregon administrative rules and Oregon's land use and development, uh, goals. So it's where you'll provide direction for the plan and plan updates, uh, for, and updates to the development code. Uh, maintain a citizen involvement plan that ensures the opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases of the planning process. So kind of, uh, right now you do public hearings and you allow for citizen comment. It might be something where as part of the citizen committee for citizen involvement, you say, well, how can we better get citizens to come to planning commission meetings and give their opinions? Because, uh, it's usually just the planning commission at planning commission meetings. And, and it should be something that whole community is involved in. Uh, you'll be able to employ, one of the things is you should employ various methods of informing citizens and obtaining their opinions. So that might be in surveys, it might be mean, uh, knocking on doors and getting people to actually show up at the meetings. It might mean, uh, sending out an email to the city at some point or through the city, uh, manager that says, hey, we would love to get comments from citizens. Uh, there's a suggestion box in city hall or something like that. Uh, you're also supposed to evaluate the effectiveness of your citizen involvement programs annually at your October meeting. And that is, uh, actually just part of the administrative rules. So at your October meeting, you're supposed to evaluate how you've been doing with your, your citizen outreach programs. Uh, and then you recommend and suggest to the city council, anything they need to do to change that so that it becomes, uh, more involved or engaged community. Uh, there's a provision in here as well. This is D, recommendations to the city council. So if you're making recommendations to the city council, they should be in writing and, uh, and should include findings and reasoning to support the recommendation. So, uh, the preference in this case is just that if you're going to make a recommendation to the council, it's a formal recommendation so that it can be acted upon and it becomes part of the public record. Uh, coordination with other planning bodies. This one is kind of an open question. I threw it in because I thought it was a great provision that McMinnville had, but it's not necessarily something that has to be in the code. Uh, McMinnville says that the planning commission will, to the utmost of its ability, uh, as appropriate, interact with other jurisdictions, planning bodies and districts as appropriate. So this would be like the planning commission, uh, has some sort of a, an inner district meeting with the school district or the fire district or something like that. And you start integrating, uh, multiple districts or multiple planning departments or multiple planning commissions or multiple cities. And you start kind of drawing the whole of the community in around you rather than kind of the planning commissions in its own box. And then you've got the city council in its own box and the planning commission in other cities in its own box and never shall any of the twain meet. You all just kind of stay in your own separate places. The goal is to integrate things because as, uh, as cities grow eventually, as I guess Carlton and Yamhill have this problem, but as cities grow, eventually your borders start to mix to a point where a city's problem is both cities' problems or multiple cities' problems. And those become things that it's, it's helpful to have kind of the whole village making decisions in those cases. Uh, and then the last one is requests of the city council. So, uh, the power of the planning commission to make studies, hold hearings or prepare reports and recommendations is upon its own initiative or at the request of the city council. So this opens up the potential for the city council to say, hey, planning commission, we've heard citizens say they're really concerned about water development. Uh, we want you guys to do a study and tell us, you know, what's our long-term potential for, you know, the freshwater or, or sewage, uh, systems? Do we, do we have enough? And they can, uh, pass the buck to you guys is essentially what that provision lets them do. I went over those a little fast, but are there any of those provisions that stand out as concerns or things you want to change or modify?
I think they pretty accurately and expansively, uh, reflect the nature of our, um, uh, of our duties here. And unless anybody else has any other specific, uh, contributions, I think we can move on to the next section or any reasons that anything which mentioned was opposable. Bob, Bob noticed that on the date of the proposed ordinance, uh, we just want to make sure it's updated to 2021 by, uh, the mayor's signature.
Oh, if that's 2020. Yeah, well, we'll make that change.
I was sitting next to a falcon. He, he's just got those eyes for detail. Uh, all right. We'll let you continue with staff support.
Yeah. So staff support, the city manager, at the city manager's discretion can assign staff to the planning commission. This is, uh, staff support for various things. So the idea is that these requests, if the planning commission needs additional support for something, uh, for example, you have, uh, you, you want Kyle to come by and give a talk to explain what, uh, the urban growth boundary is or something like that. Uh, that's something that at the city manager's discretion, she can dole out city minions. Uh, but that is largely something that wouldn't be denied to the city council unless it's unreasonable. So if it's something where you want Kyle to, to like put on some huge expensive procedure where he'd have to put 30 hours into it, then the city manager can say that's unreasonable. We don't have the time or the money as a city to do that. But otherwise, if you have reasonable requests of city staff, the, the idea is that the city will, will support you with that. And then we get to section 212.80, which is conflicts of interest. This is from Oregon City in Dundee. They have effectively the same provision. Uh, member of the planning commission shall not participate in any commission proceeding or action in which any of the following has a direct or substantial financial interest. A member, their spouse, their brother, sister, child, parent, mother-in-law, father-in-law, any business where they're a member, uh, or where, uh, where the member is serving or has served within the past two years, uh, or any business in which the member is negotiating for something or has an arrangement and understanding concerning prospective partnership or employment. Essentially, if you're in negotiations to become a partner in a construction firm and that construction firm is asking for permission to make a development, that's a point where we'd say that's a conflict of interests and, uh, you should disclose that. Uh, we don't, you, I, I don't believe under Oregon law, we can obligate a commissioner to, to recuse themselves, but it certainly helps the administrative procedure if they recuse themselves because it, on appeal, any of these conflicts of interest become problems. So we just want to make those as, as clear as I, as we could kind of, this is what a conflict of interests would be. And we would like for these not to occur because it, it leads to lengthy and expensive appeals.
Can I, can I just ask a quick question? So, um, so for example, tonight I recuse myself from that meeting because I, I mean, I've known those, that family for years. Our kids went to school together. It would have been awkward had I thought like, oh, I really want to deny this. It would have been super awkward and I would have felt some personal pressure to vote yes on that, right? Um, and so I feel like that, I mean, it was no financial gain one way or the other for me, but I felt like that was an important thing to do.
So what this is, is kind of the difference between, uh, bias and conflict of interest. Conflict of interest is, uh, financial in almost all cases, financial or like a familial link. Whereas a bias is something where in a court of law, it doesn't really mean it's a problem, but it starts to tip the scale in one direction.
Right.
Uh, you know, if, if, for example, the mayor came out and wanted to, to build something, uh, and the planning commission was all appointees of the mayor, it would be something where most of the planning commission would have difficulty without, like there's, there's difficulty without like there's, there's potentially a bias because the mayor appointed these people, but it's not. It doesn't mean that the planning commission is being they they aren't voting based on unreasonable grounds. When there is a bias in place, you can in theory vote or or make decisions that are reasonable and that's totally okay. It just creates the the potential for appeal down the road. So if, for example, you denied an application or approved an application because of a bias, an opponent of that application can come out and say, well, that wouldn't have turned out the way it did had it not been for such and such person's relation. Conflict of interest, on the other hand, is where you literally have like a finger in the pie that's being discussed at the meeting. And that's something that gets into like legal problems more than anything else.
Sure. And so we don't, I haven't, I I think unless I've been asleep at the wheel, I haven't noticed any language about bias in this. And so this doesn't need to be in there.
We try and avoid, or at least I tried to avoid language about bias in this case, because no other city has put that in their planning commission code. And in general, bias is a really hard thing to diagnose because it usually needs to be something that is self-stated by a person. They they declare a bias that exists. And if the if bias exists in abstract, it's really hard to trace and it's really hard to kind of put down or to follow or to like follow the string with. And if we have a provision in the planning commission code that says bias is the following things, it provides kind of a handhold for someone to argue about in something that is the most subjective way to appeal a planning commission outcome. So so my preference is to declare conflict of interests. These are objective, they're real problems because someone has financial interest and that becomes like it it can get to a point where there's like almost fraud or or the city could be on the line monetarily or fiscally for for violations. Bias. There they it'd be a long day in court to kind of argue over whether the bias existed or not. And so I my preference is to not put in explicit language of bias.
That makes sense. Yeah, that totally makes sense. Okay.
And then we're on the last one. So so thank you all for for being here for the the length of this one. I I started telling my wife that every time the planning, the planning commissioner city council meeting has like one page of of the schedule, it's the longest meeting that we're going to have. For whatever reason, the like three page schedules are the shortest meetings. The last thing is expenditures. And this is planning commission shall have no authority to make expenditures on behalf of the city or to obligate the city for payment of any sums of money except as herein provided. And then only after the city council hell shall have first authorized the expenditure by appropriate action. So this is relevant in that the planning commission can, based on what we've established as one of your authorities, you can do studies, you can you can ask for professionals to be assigned to you to actually like decide things. But those expenses need to be approved by the city because technically the planning commission doesn't control the purse. That's a city manager slash city council decision. And so we're just kind of putting in a a guardrail here that says, if you're going to spend money, just make sure you ask first before you spend it. And that's that's the idea of that provision. Does that work with people or are there concerns of that that you'd want to change?
I think that's good. The less money we have to worry about, the better. Our job's focusing just on the facts.
I don't want to worry about it.
And then the last thing to mention is I this is one that I just removed whole hog from the original code. You used to have in your planning commission code, something about violations and penalties, which basically said anyone that violated provisions of this would be punishable by a fine of up to a hundred dollars. But there were no there was nothing to violate in the code, and I'm not really sure how it applied at all. So if you would like to, we can put in like, if you violate these provisions, then, you know, danger, there could be a fine. But I I can't really find a foothold for what that would relate to. So up to you guys, if you want to bind yourself to the mast on this one and have some sort of a fine for violations.
No fines.
I think we're engaging in a lot of new regulation. This can be one step of deregulation we can undertake tonight.
Yeah, we were clearing things up this way.
Wasn't there something before about being able to remove, like at least the officers? So I guess if we felt the officers were violating some something, we could remove them.
Yeah. Otherwise, I'll change the thing. So it says twenty twenty one. We're not living in the past here. And that is, that is the entirety of my perspective update to the planning commission code. Now you get to have your discussion about it and
Well, I I think we've had the benefit of a discussion throughout the evening. I think the takeaway is we're not necessarily, we're voting on something, but that you conferred with us and you'll take our notes back to the the council with a proposed revision. I don't think the intent is to come back and get a second for us to have a second bite at the apple. Is that correct?
I I mean, the planning, the council might send it back if they don't like the changes. Just just fair warning, but but more likely than not, yeah, that whatever the the suggestion is, we'll we'll likely it might see minor changes at the council level, but the all all of these, I think, are reasonable changes.
And then and then in our next meeting, Nicholas, will you provide us with the the draft copy that the council looks at?
Yep, I can do that.
All right. And my apologies to my power went out. So what else is going to happen today?
Oh, man.
You know, in dark, I had to come here to the neighbors. So we're trying to figure it out, but it's one of those things. It's Carlton.
All right. Well, I I think since we're not making a recommendation, everybody's had their voice, Mr. Peaslee and Mr. Jenkins for your contributions. Thank you very much. I know this is not easy, not short, but it's especially appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Yeah, that was great.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And I also want to shout out to the mayor and the city manager for acting on these recommendations that we had asked for. So thank you for following through and having staff do such an outstanding job. Really, really appreciated all the little bubbles on the side with the reasoning and the sources. So makes our work easy. Thank you.
Excellent. So at this point, we are now past our agenda items. We'll just welcome to commissioner comments. I do know that Susie had a contribution she wanted to speak of today. And at the at the risk of stepping on her toes, I just want to give a little bit of an update. I did hear from Ms. Bocare, who is no longer with us this evening. And she is planning on having a conversation, if she hasn't already, with Jenna this week from ODOT. So I wanted just to clarify that for Susie on the record. And Susie, I'll have you briefly tell us about your interactions with Jenna at ODOT and what we're planning on doing with the a dual presentation to the council and the commission.
Okay, um, so just as background information, ODOT sent out a generic survey. Gosh, in the summer, it was a long time ago, just asking for anybody who wanted to to fill out a survey. And I filled out, I went ahead and filled out a survey because they're doing all those upgrades on all over the state. I'm sure you've noticed with sidewalks and streets and Lafayette's all torn up. And so I just randomly sent something back because I'm interested in streets and things. And so Jenna Berman from ODOT, who's the active transportation liaison for ODOT contacted me and said, gosh, I love so many of your ideas, you know, can we get together and talk about this? And so I said, sure, I'd love to. And so we talked a couple of times. Christie was the interim city manager at the time. And I contacted her and said, hey, I'm talking to Jenna Berman and she has so many great ideas for how to make our streets livable and walkable and pedestrian friendly and cycling friendly and make our community a cohesive connected community. And Christie was really explicit that please don't represent the city because, you know, the city needs to represent the city. And so I was super careful on that. And so Jenna and I had a conversation. Some of the things we talked about were like bulbouts, like the little crosswalk bulbouts like we have downtown on Main Street for where seven, the new Seventh Street connection connects to Maine and at JR Meadows to make that intersection smaller. We talked about safe routes to school, Third Street, where it connects from Maine and Third, where kids walk to school. There isn't even a ADA ramp for the kids to get across the street there. The crazy, stupid incomplete infrastructure on Third Street. We talked about that. She she has a wealth of information and a wealth of expertise on how to leverage grants and funding opportunities from ODOT for all these pedestrian connections. Another thing we talked about was the railroad grade in Carlton, within city limits, making that a park with so to kind of connect the north and south ends of town just within city limits. And then if someday the M-Hailas Trail was created, well, then it could connect up with that. But meanwhile, we could perhaps leverage, she had ideas about state funding to leverage creating a park on that railroad grade. So some really exciting opportunities. And one of the things she offered was an educational presentation for planning commission and city council on how to create a community that is really connected with pedestrian and cycling opportunities and making the streets safe for all users. And I had approached Christie and said, hey, can we get this put together? And Christie was interim city manager. And she said, yeah, we'll meet with Jenna and do that. And so it sounds like they followed through. And so I am really looking forward to hearing from Jenna. And I'm hoping that she's going to do some presentation both on grant and funding opportunities as well as just how to what what we as commissioners should be looking at when we update the code and how we can make our our streets more sensible so that they don't end up like Seventh Street and JR Meadows with just wide streets where people aren't welcome to walk. It just it's the opposite of what smart development should look like. So that is my blurb. And so I was, before I knew that the city was already going to do that, I was going to ask that we recommend that we invite Jenna for a presentation, but it sounds like that's already on board, right? Yeah. So that's that.
Digital hand from Annette. We're just gonna unmute you there, Annette. There we go.
Okay, how are we now?
Good.
I just wanted to follow up based on Susie's comments with the development where we had touched on that last, end of last meeting about striping where the bicycle lanes are supposed to be down that street. And I know that, you know, it is still under development and people are moving in and whatever. But did you forward that request to them? Or do we have any sort of feedback? Or is it not the appropriate time?
Yeah, so I can speak to that briefly. So this, as as you know, I think I mentioned that, you know, it was my belief that you know, there needs to be bike lanes and that kind of stuff in these types of developments. So I reached out to the developer last week. And, you know, asked if that would be a possibility. And they reached out to Gordon, our city engineer, who had been one of the people that had worked with them on that original project back before I started with the city. And they essentially said, you know, hey, I thought we had talked about this, you know, we're not going to be doing this, blah, blah, blah. And the crux of it is that essentially the development code has three separate conflicting provisions here. One that requires bike lanes, one that requires on-street parking, and one that requires a certain width for collector streets. So, you know, I I, in my opinion, I think there you know, if I had been the planner at the time, I would have prioritized the bike lanes, but it wasn't done at that time. And after some conversations with the city manager and with Gordon, the city's decided that that's not a priority at this time. And that's really the only update I have on that.
So Kyle, Kyle.
Just what I was told.
Yeah. So so Kyle, can we send it to council and have council decide if it's a priority?
Um, yeah, I mean, honestly, I I don't want to overstep here. I'm just, I'm the contract planner. I I, you know, I have my own thoughts on this, but as far as as far as what I'm told to convey, I think that's really something that you need to, I know, and I know you've you've contacted the city manager about it, but if that's something you want to bring to council, I would recommend.
I would say that the city manager said that the bike lanes exist if they aren't marked, which it doesn't, just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, and and I and again, I don't want to throw anyone under the bus here. I just not, I think it was just kind of a thing that happened back when it did happen, but I think there was discussions there that you know, prioritize certain things in the code over certain other things. And I think that the perspective is, from what I've understood, is that that just needs to be addressed through the development code and policy updates rather than kind of backtracking. So the bike lanes in general actually do need to be striped. That's in that's in code. So that's not necessarily the excuse. I think the excuse is that there were three different things in the code that that conflicted with each other. And at the time, a decision was made to prioritize two of those over the third, which in this case was bike lanes. And, you know, that's, that's just, that's what I have as far as information. You know, as far as elevating this further, I, you know, I can't really do much more than more than that, unfortunately. And I would recommend, you know, requesting or, you know, if if that, if that's what you're interested in, I I and I understand, I understand the the perspective of the city as well. You know, there's certain things that were said back then and they don't want to go back and backtrack on those things. So I do understand.
One question that really concerns me or one point that really concerns me is that it becomes a precedent. So, you know, and and like, I don't know what to say other than JR Meadows two was a was was that decision to prioritize parking over pedestrians and cyclists was based on the precedent in Carlton Crest where it was also done. And then there was just a continuation of that. And it just, it's heartbreaking to see a community created around historic precedent that is, it's unmarked. It's just, it's the opposite of what the rest of the nation is doing in in terms of.
No, and and I I like I said, I I agree with that. I think that I think I understand the perspective as well, that there's things that need to be done to make sure that, you know, I think what you were just mentioning about those design standards and making sure the streets are compatible with those standards and and making sure those are in code. That's a good first step. As far as, you know, in the in the time being, if we get subdivision applications in the time being, you know, I can only speak as, you know, one, you know, one part of that review team, but I I share those feelings with regards to prioritizing that kind of infrastructure. I just, I don't think that was the case at the time for whatever reason. Again, I don't want to throw those people under the bus. I think there was probably good reason for it.
I can tell you, I can tell you, like, if you read that the street is going to have bike lanes, then in your brain, I mean, what commissioner in their right mind would say, oh, there's going to be bike lanes, but they're just not going to be marked. I mean, you just would assume that they would be marked, but it seems silly.
Well, yes, and in code, they are that the definition of a bike lane requires striping. So.
Well, but but no, what I was told was that they don't have to be, they, there was no provision for painting them. So.
They are, they are defined. And I get, I don't, I don't want to go too far into this, but the by definition, bike lanes, they're striped. So that's.
Right, right.
So does, does the, does this committee have any recourse? That's my first question. And the second question would be, would it be appropriate at this point to make a motion to put this back in front of the city council? You know, as their advisory committee and saying, you know, it was certainly for all intents and purposes, our understanding that these would be demarcated. And what are you going to do about it? I don't think we should just, you know, all agree with each other's feelings and nothing happen. I would, I would make a motion if that's appropriate at this point, that we.
So. Nicholas could correct me on this, but the site plan was approved. And I didn't, I read through the decision this week and I didn't see anything that either specifically called out a bike lane or or no bike lane. There was a mention that said there's room for the bike lane, but there was nothing that so it's it's kind of a gray area on this. The city certainly can't revisit the land use decision that that authored that approval. So from that point of view, no. From a position of, you know, and I wish Shan was here to speak on this better because it's really her who, you know, has that kind of authority, but you know, from a elevation and and, you know, funding and for that kind of striping point of view, that's really above my pay grade on that kind of stuff, you know, I would like to be able to help out with that, but that's not, that's not really something I have the authority.
Last meeting, Commissioner Bandy also raised, you know, the point, and he can speak to that again if he so wishes, is that there will be or are additional pending developments by this same developer. And if if there's a violation of trust and they're going to And if if there's a violation of trust and they're gonna kind of play this game, you know, we would just ask them to essentially do the right thing. And uh.
Annette, you're right. I mean, I did bring this up, and and here's the thing. We know that development's coming. We know that development is coming at the top of Third Street. There is no doubt in my mind, no doubt in any of your mind. And if we don't find a way to mandate to the developer that these certain things can happen, must happen, uh we're negligent in our duty. So whether it means we have to go to the city council or to the the city manager and say, this is what has to be done, cuz I know we're in the middle of all of the development codes and and comprehensive plan problem, but but that development's gonna come up before any of that is done, and I almost guarantee it.
Yes. So so I guess what I what I would say to that is, um this was, like I said, a decision that that because there are these three code conflicts, the staff at the time decided that, for whatever reason, I wasn't around, I there was an indication, decision that 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 these two were going to be the priority. I'm not sure what went in that decision, um but that was the decision at the time. However, for future projects, it is codified that there needs to be a striped bike lane on on collector streets. Not on, I would need to look a little closer in the code, but um so if there is additional development that contains a collector street, that would be mandated. There's no um and and the planning commission would have to vary that standard in order to get them out of that.
Kyle, what is the definition of a collector's street?
It's a street that's classified as a collector in the city's transportation systems plan.
But so Kyle, if it was codified, then how did how did staff decide that that wasn't prioritized? That's the part I don't understand.
Well, I mean, I I I think that's a, that's a, that's a good question. I think that the issue here was that there were three separate provisions of the code that that individually all needed to be met. And um sometimes, rightly or wrongly, there's, you know, when when that happens, there's uh, you know, a site plan and alternative street segment that's that's proposed. So when you're, when they submitted that street segment for approval, that was approved um by the planning commission at the time. Um and that that's what was approved. Um however, in this case, it's it's really kind of a prioritization thing here. If the planning commission feels, if 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 the developer and applicant come to the city and say, hey, we can't meet all three of these code provisions, it's then on staff, but also mostly on the planning commission to say, hey, these are the things that the that the planning commission wants to prioritize. That, you know, this is what, you know, you're required to do. If it's in code.
But the planning commission, I so I went to all those meetings just because I was a citizen at the time. And nobody ever said, can we vary this so we don't have to paint the bike lanes? That was never an issue. It was never raised as specifically the developer said, this is one of the variances, no bike lanes striped.
Yes, I didn't, I also did not see a variance and and.
So then how? So then how?
I I I really am not sure, to be honest with you. I was not.
Surely, surely if a variance was granted by someone. So then it should go before council, right? And they should decide, well, do we want stripes or not? And no matter who pays for it, we still have to decide if we wanna save street for pedestrians and cyclists.
So the purpose of a variance, Nicholas, please stand in if I mistake, but the purpose of a variance essentially is to, if if staff identifies a problem with the site plan or what whatever that is requiring of a variance, then that should be something that needs to be varied. However, if for whatever reason that's missed, the site plan is still approved and there's no unless there's an appeal of a of a provision that was not met, you cannot backtrack and and stay, hey, this should have been met. You can say.
But can the city?
Well, not, they could have if if it had been identified within the appeal window, perhaps.
So so from this point moving forward, there there is no ability to protest this.
Not from a can we force the developer to do it?
I'm not asking about forcing, I'm asking about asking.
So the appeal window under uh development provisions in this case is, I believe it's a it's either ten or thirty days, uh but it's.
Ten days.
Ten days. So from the moment where the planning commission says we approve the following design, there are ten days to say something went wrong, we'd like to appeal this decision. And this decision was made some time ago, I believe.
Right, but but so the bike lanes are there. They didn't say we're not going to put bike lanes in.
So.
The only and and there is no variance asked for. So the assumption would be that the street would have bike lanes, yeah?
So so Suzie, I think the problem is there's no definition of what is a bike lane in our code.
No, there is, there is.
There is? Does it include striping?
Yes.
He already said that, yeah.
So so just, so it 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 it's conflicting with two other provisions in the code. So how do we resolve that issue?
So typically, if.
Going forward, I mean, at this point, I'm not gonna sit here and argue JR Meadows.
So going, so going forward, I I, you know, I I don't, I really am not comfortable, you know, giving you direction on on how to proceed forward. That really needs to go straight through the city manager. Um that's not really my, you know, place to do. But going forward, if there was a subdivision application where that arose again, I would require a variance to the standards that they wish to vary, and the planning commission could either grant or not grant those variances.
So what what I'm gonna do here, because this is a good conversation and one that probably should continue, but the city manager's presence, um which we hear earlier, but is no longer here now, I think that would be useful. So with everybody's uh consent, I will add this specific sub item for a brief presentation as to the information that is known from the city manager in our next meeting. This is not something that should extend more than ten or fifteen minutes with a little bit of conversation, but then assessment as to what our next options might be, which may be to indicate this to the city council, that this is part of a broader series of concerns that might be had, or whether or not there's any other recourse. I don't know if this is a non-conforming, if there's some sort of non-conforming thing, but I don't think we're gonna get that solved tonight. Uh and I think that it would be better and put Kyle in a position where, you know, hi- his his role is here, not as an advocate. He's trying to throw us balls and strikes. Um and so we hear it from Ms. Bocare directly. Get any further information? And if if all of it, all of this comes to be in part of our advisory role, registering our concerns to the city council, that may be where we end up going. Everybody okay with that?
I'm good, thanks.
Yes.
Thanks for putting up with me.
No, we 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 certainly appreciate the passion. That's that's what keeps us moving forward. Uh are there any other comments for this evening?
Yep.
If there's no more commissioners comments for this evening.
If we're gonna make that request, can we all?
Please go ahead, Annette.
Yes. For an update as to, cuz it sounds like it's the same procedure, but a slightly different thing with the sidewalks. Um as Commissioner Terrell pointed out, they were supposed to be six feet and they're five. So, I mean, I I would really appreciate some factual information. I mean, Kyle did do a great job in terms of the process, but if and there's not a variance, but if if the permits or whatever are approved, and then and then the person does not um follow those or comply, um, you know, certainly, I hope there's not a pattern here. Um but I would I would wonder that what we have procedurally of us to recommend to the council in terms of taking action, that's that's what I would like um to be explained to us. So not just the bike lanes, but I think also the sidewalks too. So and that would be for anybody with any sort of development if um, you know, permits are granted and then they are found to be lacking.
Mr. Peaslee, do you mind uh pro- providing, you're just kind of getting a general snapshot on what that looks like for recourse? That is a just a high-level matter for the planning commission, so we're aware of 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 what what's on the table, if there's anything on the table?
Typically, it'll it'll depend on the style of violation or the style of uh non-conforming use. So in this instance, for example, I I I can't speak to it specifically based on the language of the code. But uh in a different instance, if a site design was approved that required buildings have uh like fire uh fire flow and fire flow is not provided, building occupancy permits would not be granted at the end of the process. Or there would be additional holds on the process that effectively make the property um unsellable to a certain degree. Uh I'm not certain how that applies for something that is not related to like health and and safety in the same way fire flow is.
I I will make one one last comment, sorry to keep this going, but there is a allowance for modification of some of those design standards without a variance. But it still needs, those findings need to be made that a certain set of criteria are met. So it's possible that's what happened at the time of of JR two. Um I didn't see anything in particular in the decision or anything like that that would have indicated that was the place. But there is a a kind of loose procedure for an allowance to modifications if there's topographic conditions or uh strange partial shape or or something like that. So I'm not saying that's what happened, but that's a potential for for how that was approved without a variance. And that's a just one last note on that.
Say really one quick thing. I don't really care who pays for the bike lanes. Just my only recommendation is that they need to exist. And so whatever procedural thing we can do to recommend that that happened, that was my ultimate goal.
And we are going to be addressing the code. Um and so maybe enforcement provisions, whether or not it's the planning commission or somewhere else in the city, or adding a double check to provide that to to confirm that certain conditions of a site design review or otherwise are met as of the time of commencement. Maybe that's something we can address. So we'll note that and we'll include that as part of our code code revisit. I think that um all of these are very excellent perspectives. Uh and I think if anybody would like to make a motion for us to adjourn, I don't believe there's any other commissioner comments for the evening.
I'll make that motion. Let's adjourn. But thank you for the lively discussion.
I think that looks like Jim trying to give us a second.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thanks a lot, everybody.
Voice vote from everybody. We're okay adjourning. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Nobody's opposed. Matter passes unanimously. Have a great night, guys. Thank you and have a good one.
Thanks for all your.